Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for April 18th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stephen, do you have some announcements?
Sure. The annual town reports, hard copies, it's all posted online, but hard copies are available at the Town Hall. So we print a bunch of them, so if people want a hard copy, please stop by. Usually there's a pile of them outside the window at the Clerk's Office, or they can come in the Select Board's Office and get a copy there as well. We do have, it's an agenda I know a little bit later, but just a reminder for people that the next town meeting forum that will focus on the DPW project, but will also include a discussion of other articles, is on Tuesday, it's April 26th at 7:00 PM in the Business and Technology Center, sorry, 6:00 PM at the Business and Technology Center. And that people, there is a way through something called Eventbrite to register, which is nice because we try and get some food, and last time we had three times the amount that we needed. You know, firefighters were appreciative of that because they're the people that are available to dump food on 24/7. But please let us know you're going to be there, or you can email the moderator, rtownsman@longmeadow.org, and just, you know, a headcount would be good because we do have some snacks there for people. Converse, we've, I've heard-
Can I just step back once? It was Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, the 26th.
Wednesday, 26th.
Right. I have heard from some folks about the Converse Street project. We do the best we can to keep updates on the progress, but just to remind folks that it is a mass DOT project, and so we are, to some extent, a third wheel on that project, that they work with their contractor. They do keep us informed, but like I said, to some extent, we find out at a weekly meeting versus, you know, in the field, day-to-day thing, so I just ask for people's patience. And if they want to know some information that isn't, that they haven't seen, we can certainly track it down for them, but that is, it's not a town project, so we're not directing the work at the contractor directly.
But it should be going on for months now.
It will be going on all year and into next spring.
Okay.
So I think that's about it for me.
I just wanted to add one thing. I hear some people don't know that we have a two-night town meeting. So it's Tuesday, May 9th, and Wednesday, May 10th, and they can see what is going to be heard by going to the warrant article and also looking online. You'll be able to see which articles will be which night. The articles are not going to be switched from night to night, and if you, you can go and look online about the forum that our town moderator has put forward, and it will discuss some of the articles. Not just DPW, but the other articles are discussed, and questions and answers are current, but you can, if you can't make the forum, you can still send in some questions, and we'll try to answer them that night.
Or, you know, certainly feel free to call, call us at Town Hall if you have questions and you're not available to go to a forum, or we're available fairly often.
Any other announcements from the Select Board?
It's 6 o'clock on the 26th, or 6:30?
Is it 6:30?
I have a note.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I think it's, the other one was 6:30, so they probably are, you're right, at 6:30.
Yeah, well, I just want to comment.
I have it 6:30, sorry.
Okay. Well, in the town paper, the Long Meadow News, there was an article talking about how myself and other people are being fiscally irresponsible, and I really didn't think much of it, but I did get a phone call from a resident, and so they asked me about, you know, why we might become the board that spends more money than any other board in history, and why we're so irresponsible. And so a couple of things I just wanted to comment. One is that, you know, a complaint was about the, well, about any project that's coming up that's going to be too expensive. But I guess the concern is that, you know, as a board, I can only vote on what's presented to me. You know, I can't present on anything else. And some of the least, you know, the opportunities that would have been less expensive, like if we had put the DPW in Wolf Swamp Field, that was not an option. I mean, that was taken away, and the person who was complaining about us also played a part in that. The idea of putting a senior center at Bliss Park, you know, I thought was a perfect spot, would have been the least expensive kind of alternative, and that was taken away by, you know, the town is a legislative body. They make the decisions. Now, as I thought about it, in the, you know, was there any other choice that I had? And really, the only other choice that we have in terms of, you know, the DPW costing less than $20,000 or whatever, would be that if we purchased the land where the tennis court, the tennis stadiums are, and if we just use those as a senior center, or not as a senior, if we use those buildings as a DPW, you know, if we drove trucks in there on the tennis courts, and we found some other thing. But that's not something that our committees came up with. When I talked to people about that option, they said, no, that's not even an option. You know, we can't use those buildings. So we really, you know, I feel like it's unfair for this board, but specifically myself, to be judged as being fiscally irresponsible when these are the only choices we have to make. And, you know, I just hope the town will be patient with us because we have to respond to what gets voted in at town meetings, and, you know, and we'll see how things go, but, you know, we have committees that make these decisions and bring their ideas to us, and we do the best we can with them. And I, I know this board is very concerned about, you know, how money is spent in this town, and so I hope you just don't believe everything you read in the papers.
Any other Select Board comments? Resident comments?
Oh, you're getting wires. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, Eleanor, you got wires hooked in there.
That's all right, thanks, Phil.
I just want to talk about this new senior center. Five years or more, we decided to look into a new senior center. There were committees, we spent a lot, a lot of time, especially a lot of people, checking it out, doing everything. Actually, I think what they've done saved the town thousands of dollars. And then along came a DEETS report, and, and looking it over, I don't feel this is suitable for seniors, the whole report, but there weren't anybody from our board that had done all this background, that were on that DEETS to, you know, make that picture. And that's what bothers me, that nobody was on that board. And, you know, I just feel it's not right. It's not suitable for seniors. There's a lot of seniors in town. They've lived here 40, 50, 60 years, and this is our town. And, you know, we want something suitable, and frankly, I think we deserve it after all those years in town. But, you know, I don't feel that this presentation they gave is right, and I don't see that it's smaller than what we have now, and I don't think it's going to attract younger seniors to take part, and that's what we depend on, because they want it. We have a suggestion box, the Council on Aging Board has a suggestion box, and we get a lot of comments in that suggestion box, and people always, that come in from other towns say, they can't believe they're coming to Long Meadow Senior Center because they think, wow, Long Meadow, this is going to be something. And it's a big disappointment when they come, that's for sure, and we all know that. But, so I think there should be an opportunity for the people that really, they're good, our Chair of the Building Committee, Vice Chair, all those people are good people, and they should be involved in what we need. I mean, they know all the spaces and what should be there, and they should be involved in, you know, a new senior center. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Jim Russell, 108 Bello Drive in Long Meadow. Members of the Select Board, I commend you for taking the hard road rather than the easy road with regard to development in Long Meadow. Somebody at some point in time has to do what is right for the citizens of Long Meadow. Every one of you are smart businesspeople. So in deference to the comments made by Tom, I commend each and every one of you. It'd be very easy to take the broom and sweep it down the road again and have nothing happen. I have three, I have two questions and a comment, if I might, Madam Chairperson. My first question is, what is the status of the cell tower at the tennis courts? Where does that stand now?
Oh, we're still in discussions. There's, but there's nothing been settled.
Still in negotiation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number two, the, my understanding is that a building committee is in the process of being appointed to handle building projects in Long Meadow. May I ask what the status of that committee is?
We're waiting probably until after town meeting or the town election, and the committee is, we're going to try to get them to up and running with the other two committees, and then those committees will dovetail into the new building committee by the summer. But right now, I think there's still work to be done by the Adult Building Committee. They're still in process of design and planning, and the DPW is still working on their projects.
And my final comment and only request would be that the information that's been garnered over the last five years by both the Town Managers Building Committee and the Select Boards Committee, that that information, which has hundreds of hours of detail, be shared with that building committee so they don't have to redo what's already been done.
I think we've been careful to have people from those committees on the final building committee, so I'll pass that on to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Christine Forster-Regan, 74 Dunn Road, Long Meadow, Mass. And I'm here once again, following up from last meeting regarding the Burney Road Railroad Track Crossing. Just wanted to see if we've made any progress with voting on what could be done next with that as far as keeping it safety, safe from the public right now while we're in the process of hopefully trying to install the proper equipment crossing bars and lights. I'm here today with Debbie Coles, one of Warren's relatives. Warren is the DPW worker who lost his life on those tracks, and it's very important for us to keep this in the forefront, and so we'd like to hear something tonight on what the next steps would be, if possible, for the DPW, or for the Burney Road Railroad Crossing. I did hear somewhere down the line that there's going to be some construction on the Emerson Railroad Crossing area, and that we might, as, when I say we might, I live down on Dunn Road, and the Burney Road access is our only other way to get out of the meadows, if you will, rather than using the Emerson Road. And I heard that the Emerson Road Crossing is going to be closed for a period of time, and that my street along with West Road might have to use the Burney Road Crossing. Didn't know when that was going to occur, and just wanted to keep that out front there also in case that is a factor that we all have to consider.
We're going to be getting a report from the Town Manager today. Two, if not, there might even be multiple agencies that we're trying to coordinate with, so I think it's going to take a while, but we, we're waiting. I understood there was a meeting in the Town Managers Report, but we'll, I'll be sure to follow up with any information to you directly so you can understand what's happening. Just send me emails.
Okay.
But again, you're going to be hearing just as we hear tonight.
Great. One last thing is, I did get a phone call today from Brian Ash and Eric Lesser, and on May 1st, I know at the same time, I believe that you have your appointment at 7:00 AM, or 7:00 PM at the police station. There is going to be what he's, what they called a neighborhood meeting to get us all together to talk about this railroad crossing at Burney Road.
We haven't heard of that yet, so thank you for letting us know.
More the better.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
What was the date of that meeting?
May 1st.
May 1st, okay.
Exact same time as our-
As our meeting. And thank you, thank you for coming.
I was told it was a neighborhood meeting from Brian and Eric. I didn't know, I didn't get the sense it was a public meeting. I just found out about it this morning myself.
You did, okay. All right, and any other resident comments? Oh, Shirley, come on up. Well, hopefully we can get a better one for you, but-
Well, we had to split Saul and I up because we're just-
How you're too close.
Thank you for that. My name is Fran Miffett. I'm at 81 Nevin's Avenue in Long Meadow, and I'm part of the Council on Aging Board and have been attending as a regular citizen to the building committee for the new senior center. And I, I know that we are all trying to do the best we can, but the DEETS presentation totally, the DEETS presentation was not what we expected. We didn't realize that, that it would look like a very modern building, first of all. And as somebody who lives in that neighborhood, it just, it just will not fit in, and it will absorb the entire park. So we'd like to say that we've done a lot of work, as you know. You've done a lot of work. I think together, if we, if we, if we join together and ask each other what's going on and work together, we can certainly do much better than what was presented to us.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to move to, oh, and then we already checked with Select Board comments. I know we, announcements became a little bit of that. All right, so moving right on down to the Adult Center Director Confirmation. Do you want to come up? And I want to apologize to the COA, and I am your liaison, and I was on vacation when our new director was appointed, so I couldn't get the information down to you in a timely manner. But he's here to present himself, and thank you very much for coming in and joining the town of Long Meadow.
I'm excited, thank you. My name is Jim Layden, and I am the new Adult Center Director for the Council on Aging in Long Meadow. I come with 17 years of experience working in Council on Aging and Senior Center. I've been the program coordinator for the City of Chicopee Council on Aging for 12 years, and then most recently I have been the Deputy Director for the Town of West Springfield Council on Aging. I'm excited about this opportunity. I think there are a lot of great things going on at the Adult Center in Long Meadow. I think programmatically it's very strong. I think that there's, obviously there's all these types of challenges coming into a center about where it's going in the direction, but I do think that there is some great things that are going on that also can be done in the future. I'm just happy to have this opportunity. I'm happy to work with the staff. I'm happy to work with the board. I think there's a lot of things that I can do programmatically, operationally, and there's a lot of trends going on in the future that can be done too, and I'm just really grateful for this opportunity.
Any questions?
I was hoping to make an introduction before he spoke. So we obviously did a, a hiring process to fill the vacancy. We got a large number of applicants, a very, very deep pool of talent applied for the job, and as you know, at each phase, Jim was really, really shown himself to be the most prepared and best equipped to be our, our new director for the phase we're in right now. I think he'll pick up where Amy left off quite well. I do want to commend Michael Squindo, who's been serving as interim director since Amy left, and he's done an excellent job in that regard, and I'm proving that, that he too someday will be a director of the center, and to thank him for that effort. But like I said, you know, Jim really shown himself as someone who not only, I think, understands the needs of the senior community and has had great experience in developing programs and services to meet those needs, but also a tremendous fundamental understanding of how municipalities work. And so not only do I think it would be a benefit to the Senior Center, I think he's going to be a benefit to the entire department head team because of his knowledge of municipal operations generally, and his, and not only is the stuff he's done and his experience he just laid out, but the new ideas that he presented in his interview. So I, I'm really excited about this hire, and I would ask for the Board's confirmation of the appointment.
Any questions from the Board?
Well, just, no, has he officially started?
No. He's, he's, he's tentatively slated to start May 1st, but it's subject to the Select Board confirmation, so if you say no-
So then-
No pressure, Tom.
Well, no, because the question, it's just, you know, in, so you've had enough of a look at our, but you haven't gotten your hands dirty yet. You know, you've kind of looked at what's going on.
Right.
And, you know, I, so is there anything that you said, boy, I just can't wait to get my hands into this part of the, you know, in terms of expanding programming, or something that seems to be missing, or something that needs to be tweaked a little bit?
Yeah, I have done some research on the organization. I think programmatically it's very strong. I think there's a really good lineup of programs that meet a ton of needs. I think when I come in, I'm going to evaluate all of those programs. I'm also going to evaluate the structure and the systems that are currently being operated. And then I'm really going to also have to evaluate the facility going forward too, to see if operationally it's compatible going forward. We do have an older adult community that is growing, but I also think that sometimes you have to work best with what you have, and then try to expand your programming as you go forward. So I do think there's a lot of exciting opportunities. I know that there's talk of a new facility, and some of that was put on the back burner, but going forward, if that happens, that's fantastic for the town. If there's things that can be done within the current facility that can be expanded, then that's great as well. I'm here to bring stability and structure to the organization, and then also be an advocate for all the older adults in town.
I would just say that the idea of a senior center is, it's never been on the back burner. It gets pushed back off the stove, but it's never goes out. They keep burning it, yes, that's for sure. But, all right, I don't know what other folks.
Any other, Mark?
Go ahead.
Oh, Richard?
I guess I have a quick question for you about one of the things that we've had kind of go-rounds before on our senior, senior center staff, and that really is the, the use of professionals versus volunteers, and what's your, what's been your history with use of professionals versus volunteers?
I think you have to have both. I think an organization like the Senior Center, really volunteers are the lifeline of the organization. I have worked with numerous volunteers over the years that really help bring stability to the organization. They do all types of things, whether it's help with programs, help administratively. I mean, they are so valuable when it comes to a senior center, but then you also need professional staff too that are really strong and have certain capacities that can take the organization to the next level. So I think any successful Council on Aging has to have both, absolutely. A senior center could not survive without volunteer service, without volunteer opportunities, but then you also really need a strong professional staff too.
Second question has to do with, with financing and budgets. I don't know if you're familiar, but in the town of Long Meadow, we have a, it's a Friends of the Long Meadow older citizens called, initials are Faloka.
Yep.
Have you had any experience working with a, if you will, a Friends of group that had both, you know, independence, some independence, it's got a separate Board of Directors?
Absolutely, yeah. When I worked for the City of Chicopee, I was heavily involved with the Friends organization there. They were instrumental in getting the new facility in Chicopee built, and then I've been currently working with the Friends of the West Springfield Senior Center who helped with all type of fundraising aspects to support programming at the Council on Aging in West Springfield. So I definitely had experience with Friends organizations, and then with Boards of Directors too for the council.
And just my final question is, how do you see a relationship between you and, as the professional in the department versus the Council on Aging and the role the Council on Aging has given the fact that it's got some statutory allowances and restrictions within the Commonwealth?
Well, I think as far as my specific role as a department, I have to see the best interest of the town, and then I also have to make decisions based on the best interest of the older adults in the community, and I have to try to provide services for both. I, I take my role very seriously. I bring a high standard, a high expectation, and I want to be an advocate for everyone in town, but then also balance all finances and money through the town as well to achieve program capacity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Richard?
No, I don't have any.
I'm really excited about your background and being at several, being regionally at senior and adult centers, especially since I know that the COA, the Adult Building Committee have really gone around and looked at a lot of the new centers. Have you been around and seen some of the new centers that have been built in Holyoke? And-
I have, yeah. I've seen Holyoke, I've been to Enfield, I've been to Chicopee. I was part of the fundraising team in Chicopee, but I left prior to it actually being built. In West Springfield, we don't have a newer building, but we've done a lot of renovations over the years. Nothing big structurally, but we've done a lot of maintenance to improve the aesthetics of the building, and that really can go a long way too. And then I have seen some other newer facilities out toward Boston. When I was on the staff for Chicopee, we used to go take tours to kind of get an idea of how those buildings were built, what they should look likewise as far as room space, programming, and then how they're also going to fit going forward, because a lot of senior centers that are currently built now, they're built with the expectation of even having additions because they could grow as the populations grow. So I've kind of encompassed, you know, a little bit of a different blend, seeing senior centers being grown, and then also being in senior centers that are smaller that have been spruced up as well.
Yeah, because I think it'll be important for your knowledge to tell us what worked and didn't work at some of these buildings, because I know it's better to learn from their experience and their mistakes.
Right, right. And the one thing I would say is, you know, every, every building kind of fits each community. So one building that works in one town may not work in another, and same thing when it goes to programming too. Some things that work in one town do not have success in another, and then vice versa. So I'm really excited about the opportunity. I truly am. I think that there's a lot of good things on the horizon. I'm just happy to be part of it.
Have you had a chance to, maybe inappropriate because you haven't really started, but had a chance to look at the design of the senior center that they're working on?
I did attend one meeting, the last meeting, and it was a great experience. I got to meet everybody. I was really impressed with the passion that the committee members have. They're really passionate about a new facility, about the expectations that they have for the town. I've seen some of it, and I understand some of the viewpoints that have been discussed. I know that there's been talk of having a specific site. I know that there's been talk possibly about combining a few different departments, but I really haven't dug in too, too deep with it. They have made some valid points, but I also know that there's, there's a lot of other things that come into play when, you know, when talking about a site.
Is there a motion to confirm, is that what we're looking for, confirmation of the appointment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully you'll stay around because I'm going to move up from the old business, the Adult Center Building Committee was going to make a presentation, and they have some ideas after reviewing the, the initial plan. And again, this is, we're all in the beginning of planning. There's nothing that's set on the table. We're still working ideas on placement and what's going to be in the building, so- the table, we're still working ideas on placement and what's going to be in the building, so we're excited to hear about this, and I'm glad to hear you did attend that meeting. So, welcome, and...
Thank you, again. My name is Mary Beth Bergeron. I live 497 Inverness Lane in town. I want to start by thanking the chairman for including the Adult Center Building Committee on the agenda this evening. Our purpose this evening is to submit our findings to you on what we are calling the Deets Master Plan for Greenwood Park that was presented to you in the March, I think the initial March Select Board meeting this year. As you know, since the October town meeting, our committee has concentrated its efforts on developing a site plan for a new senior center at Greenwood Park. Although not put to a formal vote, it seemed very important to the town and very imperative that residents would support a new senior center if it were to be cited at Greenwood Park. Our committee strongly supports, at this time, citing a new senior center at Greenwood. In our initial deliberations on various sites in our town over the last year, we recognized fairly early on that building a new senior center at Greenwood would be a challenge. It appears that it remains so. Certainly not impossible, but certainly a challenge, since the site is so small and already accommodates a daycare center, summer camps, after-school program, two ball fields, the pool and tennis courts, and the forested area to the right. It is a small but beautiful park that has been well maintained, particularly since the construction of the school in the early 1960s. Our committee's goals were always twofold. The first, to construct a building that would be suitable to the needs of the existing population of older citizens, as well as the upcoming growth of our senior community over the next 20 years. The second goal was not to take away any other program, field space, or amenity that the town currently enjoys as a benefit of living here. We want this new building to enhance the lifestyle of our residents, both our younger population, as well as the older population in our town. This was a town project initiated by the residents, driven by the residents, for the residents. We had submitted to you in November four plans that we had developed for the Greenwood site, with a recommendation for Plan Number Four. Subsequently, you tasked the town manager with developing a plan for programming and to meet with Deets and Company's architects for the purpose of developing another site plan. At the first Select Board meeting in March, Deets presented that plan that incorporated both a daycare and a senior center with a shared space plan. Our committee then met on March 16th to review that plan closely with Deets and Company architects, together with Mr. Crane and Marie Angelidis. As you can imagine, there were a number of questions and lengthy discussions that took place at that meeting. The Adult Center Building Committee met again on April 6th to again review the plan and to come up with our recommendation to you as a board. That is what you've tasked us to, with, is giving you, we're an advisory committee, we're giving you advice. We developed a list of needs and wants, a copy of which I've given to you this evening. You'll note that an in-ground, indoor heated swimming pool is not included in that plan. That would be under wishful thinking. We once again reviewed all of the other senior centers built in close proximity to our town, as well as others in the Commonwealth. We measured the existing facility and room sizes, we developed a list of those rooms and compared them to what we believe the needed room areas and sizes should be, including the individual areas that are, new areas that are needed at a new center. At that meeting, our committee was unanimous in its opinion that the plan that the Deets came up with does not meet with the needs of our older population, is not suitable on the specific site chosen, is not architecturally pleasing, takes away the feeling of a park, and most importantly, is not affordable to the town at this time. The Deets Master Plan includes not only a 35,000 square foot building, but also modifications to every acre in the park. Given the other financial commitments of this town, we believe is facing over the next decade, we do not believe this master plan would be approved at any town meeting in this foreseeable future. We do believe, however, that a new adult center at Greenwood Park is doable. It's a challenge, but it's doable, whether it is cited at one of the four sites we presented or some other site to be determined. We do believe we have community support for a new senior center, providing the park remains a park and that the other activities at the park remain in place. Tonight, again, we've provided you with that list of needs and wants, the building size evaluation we came up with, that definitely needs an architect's input. This was just our, in our experience, we felt that these were probably the room sizes that would work. We're certainly not going to get all of the things that are on there, and they certainly are going to need some modification, and we recognize that. I've also given you the Healthy Aging Data Report from UMass that is showing you the growth of the senior population over the next decade. In conclusion, we do strongly support the warrant article for further design funds for a new senior center at Greenwood Park, and we would hope that the enormous amount of work product that has been developed over the past five years will be utilized by an architect team to develop a plan that is beautiful, affordable, and an enhancement to the lives of the older residents both now and in the future. And we hope that, we know obviously you support the warrant article, because it's on the, it's on the warrant. So in conclusion, we thank you for your attention. If there, I'd love to answer any questions. We could have given you data that would go from here to forever, piles of papers, but we decided to kind of keep it simple tonight.
Thank you. I think it's very important, all of the extra pages, too, that show what other towns have done.
Yes, yes.
And what I'm going to do is give this, Debbie, did you get a copy? So you can put it in the packet, and so anyone who wants to in town can access this on the internet in another day or so.
Yeah, let me just comment on that for a minute. We've given you a list of all of the senior centers in the surrounding towns and areas, and you'll notice the square footage of those. They are dedicated senior centers, they are not shared space plans. To my knowledge, there is not a shared space senior center in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our needs are different, seniors, seniors' needs are different than other, than other younger people's needs are.
Any questions?
I just have a couple of questions. I just want to thank you for your comments. I just want to make sure that this column is what your committee came up with.
Yeah.
When it says proposed, so this isn't the Deets proposal.
No, no.
This is your...
This is what we believe each of those rooms' space, space needs are, correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. I think the Deets proposal, room sizes came up to 7,500 square feet, which is much, a little bit less than half of what we came up with.
Are you suggesting that you move on to another architectural firm, or just...
I believe that that's a town decision. My personal opinion, and this is strictly personal, I believe that there are other architects that have more extensive experience in building senior centers that perhaps should be spoken with. Deets and Company has now come up with two plans for a senior center, neither of which worked.
Tom?
Well, yeah, because I was just wondering, I know that we'd looked, we'd seen a plan earlier from your building committee.
Four, actually.
And did it, I wondered how much aligned itself with these kind of measurements, because these are all just new. You guys have just pulled this together?
Correct. I mean, our opinion at that time was, based on other senior centers, we felt that a 15,000 square foot senior center would be appropriate, but emphasized many times that we really needed an architect's input, because, you know, although we have three or four people on our team that have extensive construction experience, we are not architects. And so therefore, like, how many square feet do you need if, for a sewing room, just to use that as an example? You know, we just took a, what I think might have been an educated guess, but we're not architects, and we really need an architectural firm to investigate the plan. I, I know for a fact that we're probably off on some of that. We did get some input, thank you, Michael Squindo, who gave us some input for storage needs for the food bank, which is obviously important, as well as the kitchen, what we have now and what should be, what we should have for the future. You know, we took some, I'd say educated guesses, but that's not firm.
Okay, great, thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, I've got a, kind of a rowdy comment, I would imagine.
Go ahead.
I went on vacation back in November, and when I left, we were in a certain direction.
Mm-hmm.
And when I came back, the world had skipped a shift, and everything had changed. What I don't understand, you are still a Select Board Committee.
Correct.
Why were you not involved with the Deets people?
You'd have to ask the town manager.
Okay, I guess I could. I don't understand that part. That's the skip that I'm missing, because that, that's a natural blend. An architect should be dealing with the clients very closely, all the clients, at all times. Okay, I'll just leave it, sit there then.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm going to do a little bit of editorializing here, and Mary Beth, this isn't so much for you, but this is a topic of broad conversation in town, and one of the comments you made that I thought was appropriate was that the Deets proposal would never pass. It would never get through any of the steps that it needed to get through, certainly through town meeting, and I agree with you, and I, to some degree, I'd say I kind of thought that the minute I saw it, because it took up the park. But let me tell you what I am hearing, whether it's true or not, and whether it's broad, widespread or not, I don't know, but what I am hearing is that people like the footprint of the current adult center. And the, the thought process is, move out the kids temporarily. You know, I will tell you personally, and I've said this publicly, I've said it again and again and again, I'm not sure the town should be in the daycare business. It's not a fundamental program we run, it's not a core strength. I do believe the town should be in before and after school care, I think that's a service for parents. I'm not sure where it is, is the best place. I think schools are more appropriate, they're not used before school and after school, and it makes sense, some sense to use our school buildings more than just six or seven hours a day, especially our elementary schools. So given that, my theory and what I've heard is, move out the kids temporarily, perhaps, maybe a year or two. Move the adult department into this, into the kids' side, or tear down the kids' side and build what you need there, or at least the start of what you need there. Then move the adults into there, or if you move the adults out, tear down what you have, you know, and yes, it's going to take two years or three years, and yes, it's going to be kind of a mess for a while, but we end up with a first-class facility where we want it, that looks the way we want it. Is it the best solution? I think it's the solution that will pass, because we're not going to put an adult center on the ball fields, we're not going to put an adult center in the swimming pool, and we're clearly not likely to put one back in the woods. And given that, you know, I, I just don't understand why whoever's doing this hasn't looked at, at this phased-in concept. I mean, we, you know, we lost the argument for the high school of renovation, because my gosh, we wouldn't want our kids in a, in a high school that was twice the size that they needed, have them into half of it while we renovate part. And my gosh, we would not want seniors to be for a year and a half, or a year into an adult center, that they could use half of it while we tore down and renovated the other half. Somehow, you know, you, you drive along the Route 5, and there's, and I'm not preaching to you so much, you know, we've got 200, 250-year-old buildings, homes there, people aren't saying, well, you know, let's tear it down and start over again, because we can't, people live there, and they renovate while they live there. You know, the, the town is designed, and buildings are designed to be, be evolvable, to evolve through, through, through what we do, and I think the, the nature of this building is, let's evolve it. It helps us do things, perhaps, things like maybe save some of the systems that we've invested heavily into, I mean, very heavily with electrical systems and, and heating systems and whatever it is, and it allows us to replace the systems that we haven't invested in. And for us to say, the only answer is, you know, the throwaway society, I, I just don't get it. And so from my perspective, what's going to win on this thing is something that takes us a little longer, you know, I, I've got this sign in my office, and it says, good, fast, cheap, pick any two. And think about it, if you want a good, and you want it at a reasonable cost, it's going to take a while. And I think that's where I am on this project. I'm willing to take a little longer, because we don't want to go out and spend $20 million, but we don't want something that's not appropriate for the town of Long Meadow. The two I picked are good and, and, and cheap, and I'm willing to, you know, or less expensive, and I'm willing to go with a little bit more, more time. And I think people need to, at some point, come to that conclusion.
Could I respond to that?
Please do.
You will probably, I hope that you will recall that when we submitted four plans, two of them were for exactly that location at Greenwood Park, specifically that location. However, when measuring for parking, we could get the building to fit with a gymnasium, a 15,000 square foot building, or I think it might have been maybe two stories, I think we were looking at two stories, 15,000 square foot per level, or something along those lines, and a 5,000 square foot gymnasium. It fits there, but we don't have enough parking. Now, we didn't think we had enough parking, and I'll say it again, we need an architect to determine whether or not that's doable, and perhaps your idea about phasing it in might make some sense. As far as whether eliminating the daycare center and the after-school program from that facility, that is beyond our pay scale. That is a decision the Select Board has to make, and maybe the town, I don't really know the, the logistics of that. But the first two plans we submitted, that's what we determined, was that there would be insufficient parking. Plan Number Four puts an adult center on the existing tennis courts, does not interfere with the existing ball fields, which could be, whether it's baseball, or whether it's soccer, or lacrosse, that field would remain intact, and there would be sufficient, based on the way we measured it out, there would be sufficient parking. Is it a perfect solution? No, but it is a solution. The park is small, it is just simply small, and there's a lot there already, but certainly Option One and Option Two certainly could stay on the table, and maybe a phased-in approach is appropriate, Mark, but we have to have an architect measure that land, so that we can keep open space, so that we can keep a pool, so that we can build a new building, whether that accommodates just a senior center, or a senior center along with a daycare, that's the town's decision. But what we believe Plan Number Five, the one most recently submitted, does not work for the reasons mentioned. Everything is on the table, as far as we're concerned, as long as it works under the certain criteria in terms of being primarily saleable to the town, meets the needs of the senior citizens, and that we can get it onto Greenwood.
But if I, just, when everything's on the table, it, the, the, the solution is too nebulous, and therefore, the person with the pencil, who's drawing the picture, get, well, you get what you got from Deets. The person with the pencil gets to put down where it is. I think that if, you know, if the Adult Center Building Committee, you know, really feels it like, you know, to say, well, leave that to the town, come back, I'm willing to listen to you folks, come back with a strong statement that says, you know, here's the only thing that's going to work. You know, I, I'll tell you that, you know, put it on the tennis courts, you know, one of your needs is pickleball and other sports, so, you know, and, and don't impact the, some of the existing programs. So that kind of counters to that, but...
But that's not true, the tennis courts would be, have to be, the tennis courts are currently in very poor condition. They're rarely used, because there's gaps in the, in the, there, and that we were, the plan that we gave you for Plan Number Four was to rebuild them kind of behind the existing pool.
Well, you know, my, my point is that, that, that we can sit here, at least in my opinion, as, as a Select Board, and get nowhere with our, our discussion, you can turn it over to town, all, town meeting, and that'll go nowhere, and, and that's why we're putting together, we put together what we thought was a, a team of people who could really take this forward, and, and I apologize to the extent that you felt kind of cut out of the, the Deets decision, and I got that message loudly and clearly here, but I think we've got to make another pass at that, where you do have a, a, a voice in the, in the discussion with, with an architect, and come back up with something.
Well, the problem is, we need the warrant article to pass in order to have the money to hire an architect. Well, the problem is, we need the warrant article to pass in order to have the money to hire an architect.
You mentioned architects that have done design. What firms are you thinking so?
There's a firm up in New Hampshire. There's another firm in the middle of the country that built, which one was that?
This is not really an appropriate conversation, because hiring designers is subject to state law.
Oh, I know.
There's a procurement process. I don't want to get into recommendations.
Oh, I'm not gonna have, I just want to know what she's looked into. She's not hiring or making the decision.
No.
And so you do know firms that have done several of the area, okay? And the other question I had was, you mentioned, I know we saw those potential ideas, and those were handed over to Dietz. But how many square foot roughly were you talking?
For the senior center and a 5,000-square-foot gymnasium.
Okay, so 15,000 square feet was for, without the gymnasium? Was what you had sketched out on the back of the envelope?
That is correct, right.
All right. So what you're looking at here is almost the same.
It's close to the same, but again, I think that total comes to somewhere around 18,000. But that has to be, we know that has to be modified.
Okay.
And in fact, there's a little bit of a wish list in there, too. You know, that meeting room number five is kind of a wish list. And maybe the dance room is a wish list, you know?
And I think now that we have the new director, and Michael, who really knows the feelings of the community, we might be able to narrow down what those numbers are.
But we need the warrant article to pass, specifically for the Greenwood Park site.
Stephen?
Just to answer Richard's question, the directive by the board was for me to work with, at the time, Barry and Amy, to take the feedback we'd received throughout the processes, and come up with what we thought would be a good plan. Obviously, the, I feel badly that we didn't communicate to the Adult Center Building Committee, and other people who've been invested in this, that we were, that we had listened to them. We were taking their feedback forward through the process. But the directive was to kind of take it internally, and bring some of what we thought our ideas were back to Select Board. And we did that, and you know, I think, you know, I don't, the only thing I say is, it's not fair to have, to leave Dietz holding the bag on this one. I mean, this is a plan that, you could easily call it the Crane Plan. Because Barry and Amy and I went through it, I, you know, I asked questions about their operations. What spaces do they need? There are two town departments that occupy the space. And there's a, and Marie, you were a part of some of this as well, but there was a clear, rational thought process that we went through to get to the outcome we came to. And I think we knew when we looked at it, that it was large, and it was gonna be expensive, and...
Didn't look what we were expecting it to look like.
Didn't look like we were expecting it to look. But if you took the plan, and took elements from all these processes, some of the thoughts that she articulated. In fact, it was, two big revelations for me were the Bliss Park proposal, including a gym, which was the one that went to town meeting, and in my flaw, there was, the town meeting didn't like the location. I agree with Tom, that was a good location. And then, when you came, when they came forward with the four plans on Greenwood Park, kind of all over the place, including, you know, at the time, discussed acquiring additional land and things like that. We thought, geez, well, now let's look at the park as a blank canvas, other than the pool, which is relatively immovable, and see what we can do with that. And so that's, you know, there was kind of a rational line of thinking. And if we take bits and pieces of all the conversations, and meetings, and discussions, and previous plans, and everything else, and outline them, I can draw straight lines to every corner of that Dietz plan, and something that's been said about, talked about, and reported on in previous efforts. Now, the plan isn't well thought of, that's fine. I mean, I, my pride of authorship is somewhat dented, but you know, I think the key thing is, I agree with Mary Beth. It was something to stimulate additional thought. There are realities with renovating Greenwood that make it a very low value. It's not a good value for the town to renovate a building. I agree with Mark. I, you know, I say the same thing. We have to look into it. It's more than just daycare. It's before, after, and summer camps. Doesn't, you know, there's components to that that we can maybe get better in the plan. But it was something, a different look at it. And I think that, I agree, we need to keep this effort moving forward. The warrant article should not be perceived as a pickup where the last, you know, master plan left off. It should be, take what I did, and take all of the elements, including the master plan, take what's good out of it, and create something different. I mean, that's, it's an iterative process.
I don't think any step in the process has been a waste of time. I think going through the process of looking at the whole park, at all the needs of the community, and also what ended up being produced that day. We now know what the community likes, what it doesn't like, what there was a very strong feelings that came out. And I think Jim said something very smart. He says, "A senior adult center for one community cannot be plopped into the next community, because it's based on the character of the community, and the needs of that community." So through this process, we're getting to know what the needs of Long Meadow, per se, are. And the master plan is nowhere tied to the 250. We're still in the middle of the process, and you are our advisory group, as Mark said. We're looking forward to hearing more on what comes forward in the next step in the rendition. And I think that, as Mark says, we're hearing from the community, and that will also help us get a feeling of what people are looking for. When we see what is facing us the next few years, which is a lot of expenses. And that doesn't mean we falter in front of that, because that's what the community needs right now. And we need to look at what is the best cost.
Right.
And so I appreciate you going back and looking and saying, "Okay, this might have been great, but we would have needed to expand it another 10,000. Now let's see an alternate plan."
Correct.
And we'd love to hear from you, and when you come back and see what you bring to us. And I hope that you come back to us multiple times, so you don't just come out with, "This is the plan." So come back, bounce things off of us, get our input, call Richard directly, you know, ask his feelings on things.
No.
Yes, here's his email address.
Where's the puppy, Richard?
Well, we are more than happy, in, I would assume, in liaison with the building committee that's going to be up and running after May. But, and again, I'll go back again, and say, of the plan, of all of the plans, those four, and perhaps a number six or seven might come to the table after sitting down with an architect that has the input from the entire community. You know, that, the goal is to get a senior center that works for today, as well as for tomorrow, at Greenwood. That's the goal. And whether it's, you know, the existing site, or on the tennis courts, or in the forest, or... As long as it works for everyone, that's the goal. And I think we're more than happy to come up with plans six, seven, and eight, and get your input, and all of the town's input. We're more than happy to listen to everyone, as we have from the day, from day one, when the initial citizen's petition went in front of the town and was approved.
And the DPW could not get to where they was until they got that 250 in design money. And so, really hoping, and the board supported that article, that does work for you. Because that's how you really can come up with a real design from the architect.
Yeah, a couple of things. Richard, I'm gonna try to answer your question, and Stephen, I, I don't know how you're gonna hear this, but I thought that one of the directives was for you and your staff to listen to what had been said, and come back and see how we could develop an adult center, and account for the needs of all the town departments that were associated there. Essentially, park and rec, with camps, some, that kind of thing. But I guess I didn't intend, at the time, to say, and oh, by the way, incorporate new facilities in there. I thought it was a, because at the time, we had been talking about the same thing I talked about tonight. Can we move those? Can we relocate those? Can we do anything, recognizing that you folks know that there's a component you can't move, whether it's the summer camp, or whatever it is. So I think the disconnect, Richard, between where you left it, and I was with you at the time, you know, and where it came back to, was the extent to which it would be an adult center-only facility. And the Dietz program came back and said, "It's not just an adult center program." I think that was part of the other thing. The other comment I'll have here is, Marie, you know, your comment was that the money that was appropriated has been wisely used. I think it behooves somebody to be at the town meeting and explain where that last money was used, and how it was wisely used, when you go to ask for more money. And we literally don't have anything to show for it, other than a whole bunch of studies that have been turned down by the town. You know, whether it's the Bliss Park study, or anything else. Because there is a perception that there was money at the, for the adult center early on that was gonna do exactly what we now say we're gonna do with twice as much money. And I think that needs to be answered, because I'm sure somebody's gonna ask that question.
I believe, I mean, we certainly can get that information, certainly Stephen can get that information, that the bulk of the money that was spent was spent with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for their study, and then subsequent design by Dietz and Company. Let's say their design number one, which put the senior center in the ball field, essentially, or the extension on the senior center into the ball field. And that, and then the most recent is the money with Dietz. I can't, and I believe that that total expenditure can't have exceeded $50,000. That's all that was dedicated to that. As far as the Bliss Park recommendation, that was something that we came up with. I mean, in terms of size of the building, and, you know, maybe would, you know, would it fit? And we made that determination that it did fit. But we had a lot more room to work with there. I mean, a lot more space, a lot more wiggle room. Where, over on Greenwood, not so much. And that's why, you know, we have spent a lot of time at that site measuring, to see if we can fit in adequate parking with plan one, or plan two, or plan three, or plan four, and still maintain that look of a park. And again, there could be plan six or seven down the road.
And that was done with their skills. It wasn't money spent on all of that.
Which is, you know, I could say to you, hands down, plan number two works. But, you know, we need to have an architect confirm that. Plan number one works, plan number two works, plan number three works, and plan number four works. They work, as long as an architect agrees with that.
Right, but somebody had said, and going back to the original appropriation, "We need this money to get an architect's design, so we can start fundraising." I remember that being said. That was the intent of this initial appropriation. And the appropriation was made, and there is no initial design to go out and do fundraising. So to that extent, we fell short of the promise that was made at that town meeting at the time, and that's all I'm saying.
That was, I mean...
Okay.
It was, I mean, I'd rather we not rewrite history on this. I think that that was a result of the site issue.
Right.
And that's the thing, I think if we...
Well, I think we are where we need to be, and I don't think that money has been wasted. I think that, I think it can be clearly shown that the money has been spent well, and we're moving down in the plan, but you really can't do any true design work till you get that next level of payment. We've got a site.
Right.
Before town meeting, we'll probably have some more closer idea of where we're going to locate it, and then we'll be able to bring that to the board, as well as the town.
As an aside, may I say, as far as the fundraising is concerned, it has been brought to our attention by Michael Squindo, actually, that there is possibly the availability of grant money through CDC funds for our town. So, you know, between that and the potential of fundraising, I think we have a nice opportunity to make it more affordable, let's say, for the town. I mean, can we raise $8 million? Do you know somebody with those kinds of pockets? Have them speak to me tonight.
Mark, do you know anybody?
I have no idea.
Yes.
And I've been listening, and you're right. I dropped out in the beginning of this. When I came back, the thing had changed. And that was great, because I had a wonderful vacation. I'd do it in a heartbeat again. But you know, when I've listened to everything here tonight, and I fully support, you have to have money. You can't move forward without money. You have to have money to be able to get the designers going. But I think, what I keep hearing, I don't think we know exactly what we want to do. Because town manager has a plan, and you guys have a plan, and they haven't been married yet. And until we identify, and I don't think it's gonna take a lot of time. I think it's internal on how we find, really. We might even opt, say, "We're gonna take three places by eminent domain, because we've gotta get a bigger footprint."
That was plan number one?
Yeah, I know, and it was done that way to put the schools in there. So it has been done in the history of our town, and maybe that is a decision. And maybe we should quit worrying about what we have, and say, "What does, define what we're gonna have to have, and then we'll find the land."
Right.
And I don't think it's been done.
Can I just comment on that? Because I think Richard makes a good point. There's, you're right about that it wouldn't take too long, or, I'll say it differently, that there aren't a lot of high-level decision points that need to be made to get to that point. They're proposing a senior center, or an adult center. They're only proposing something for seniors. And that's, that was their job to do that.
Right.
And so that's, they did their job, and everyone understands why they want a senior center, a standalone senior center. You all, and I, are also responsible for a parks and rec department that also shares that space. And, and just hear me on this, the daycare is a very small part of the whole grand scheme of things. Before school, after school, parks, summer camps, those are the big things. If we dropped out of the daycare business, it wouldn't really change what we came up with, all that drastically. But you still need to have that parks and rec function somewhere there. Looking at the field space, the ball fields are less in demand than flexible field space. The opportunity to create the flexible field space was made by demoing Greenwood. And Richard, you know this well, if you built a standalone, okay, you still have Greenwood. That's gonna need renovation.
Right.
And it's not just moving some walls around, and painting, and carpeting. Once you touch it, it's millions of dollars just to get it to code compliance. You've done the analysis for the DPW project. You know that, "We're here to get the code compliance, you gotta go to here," and you haven't created a single additional square foot or moved a wall. That's a reality. And that's something that we kind of get to get comfortable with, that if you leave Greenwood, you have that liability on your hands, no matter what. That was the thought process that got us to jump from a standalone to a shared facility, because we knew that we were going to have a parks and rec department. So the decision point is, do you want to keep Greenwood, and keep that liability on the town's books, and you want to have a parks and rec department that offers summer camps there at the pool that we're about to invest some money into? And so I don't, I mean, there is a bridge there, for sure, but it's either gonna take some movement on one side, or some very difficult decisions on the other. But that's, but again, but I think, I want to go back to the point. That's why we need the appropriation for continued planning and architectural design. Like I said, I think Dietz has done a good job on both of their plans. They were given information and directives. I thought they came up with creative illustrations of those directives. If we decide that we want to change gears, and go to a different firm, and get a different voice, I think that's fine. But I don't think it's, from my perspective, I worked with them closely, I don't think it's because they weren't responsive, or didn't know what they were doing. They were following the directives of their client, which is the town.
Right. We define, they design.
Correct.
And I don't know if, and I'm not throwing water, I just don't know if we, we obviously haven't come together as two groups and defined. Because we stand right here. You're right. They want a senior center, it stands alone, and you want them combined together, and there's gotta be common ground, because...
If I could just point out, that's not entirely true.
I know, I don't mean it. I don't mean it that clean.
Plan number one and plan number two were flexible to have merged departments in those two buildings. But again, we were dealing with, but the parking is an issue. I believe the parking is an issue. Because of the encroachment into the soccer field.
You need more land.
The ball field, we need more land.
If we have to. But if we don't get a plan, we're never gonna get there. And it's, and it sounds like it's very close, but my first thought, when I looked at the Dietz thing, is said, "What happened to the COA?" Their space got cut way down, from the figures that I had in my mind that they kept saying they needed. That was my only concern. I think I shared that that night that we brought it out. I was, of course, I was caught off guard with it. I hadn't seen the thing before. And apparently, that thought process is still smoldering, that that doesn't really meet the needs, identify the needs of our seniors. And I agree with you on the other programs, Stephen. They've gotta go on, too. They're valuable programs to the community. Maybe the daycare isn't. We don't know. But the other programs, yeah. We've got a lot of kids that need camps in the summer, and a pool, and everything else. That's part of living in Long Meadow. That's why we pay the taxes we do. But I mean, it seems like it's very close, but I don't know. It seemed like you've gotta get some good, high-quality representatives at the roundtable, and say, "Okay, let's put our thoughts together. What is it that we really want as a center?" You know, Mark, your point, I'll tell you, if it's a five-year phased program, so be it. If it has to be a phased program for our community to adapt and bite those pieces off, then that's the way it has to be. If it is too large, it'll be rejected. And if they don't think it's needed, it'll be rejected. And we're gonna face that with every program that we bring before the community. And we're going to face that with every program that we bring before the community.
The town always decides.
You know, I've complained a lot of times on DPW, I wish we had a Lancers Pride, but we don't have a Lancers Pride.
And I know, to go back to Tom's comment, it's, town meeting ultimately spends the money. You know, the author of the article you referenced earlier didn't seem to reference that. I mean, it's too bad they haven't served in government, otherwise they would know that town meeting makes all the final spending decisions.
Well, and 125 people make a $65 million decision at our town meeting. And that's the truth, folks, that's what happens. So, show up at the town meeting, you're all part of this operation, but 125, 150 people vote in. And at our last town meeting, it was a secondary issue. We didn't even talk about the budget.
And I think I agree with your, end of your comment more than the beginning. I think there is, they are closer than we, we're not, we're not, not know what we want. I think we just know all of the needs, and we're getting closer and closer to a final decision, and I'm looking for the Adult Building Committee to create their magic and come up with something wonderful. And that warrant article is day two, the second article on day two, which is May 10th. And that's when the decision will be made by the town.
That's the second article, so get there, make sure you get registered inside in time.
Right.
Because it should go quickly.
Don't come late.
Don't come late.
Come early.
On May 10th, which is a Wednesday.
You're finally early on the warrant on that night.
I know. It's a miracle.
And I think the first one is very small.
It's an age-friendly community, that's the first step.
But if you don't show up for night one, you will be the light ass, no. And we're going to put the stamp on your arm.
We're encouraging everyone to come to both nights, obviously.
Good. We need support on both nights.
Well, thank you very much. We have an open mind, although, you know, maybe some people might not agree with that. We need, the town needs a new senior center, plain and simply, and, you know, move forward with that.
Not a new one, they need a senior center.
They need a senior center.
That one's an elementary school.
Yes. I know. Thank you.
That's all good.
Yes, as is evidenced if you go into the men's room on the height of...
Okay, thank you very much.
What are you doing in the men's room?
Okay, I'd like to go back up to new business, ambulance rate review, and our chief is here.
Chief Dearborn will be here to present. Willby is here.
Yes.
Good evening, folks.
Wow. Thank you.
So, my annual visit with you folks to talk about ambulance rates, what we charge folks for our ambulance services. I did submit a package for all of you to review. It's very similar to the package I submitted to you last year. Second year of a two-year rate adjustment. I, when I came, when I became the fire chief and working with Mr. Prosturzak, we started analyzing where we were with rates. I didn't have a lot of experience setting rates, so I took some training with the Collins Center out of UMS on EMS management, learned a little bit through that. And then I actually initiated a regional survey, I think I talked to you about, that I am actually the keeper of the regional survey now for all the fire chiefs, not on purpose.
Al shrug.
Yeah, so, let me just talk to you about a little bit about ambulance rates. So, ambulance rates are, really aren't regulated. They're based on, there's basically two sets of ambulance rates. There's what Medicare pays, which is a set amount every year, and then there's really, based on, we base it on regional averages, and those are the suggestions. If you go, again, you can charge whatever you want, but obviously, that gets into complaints, and more importantly, it puts a burden on our residents, and that's certainly something that I don't want to do. So, we look at what the regional rates are, and we also look at our costs for doing business. So, we do a comparison of that. So, that's really how we assemble the rates. It's done through a lot of analysis. Ambulance billing is very complicated. There basically, there's two ways you can bill for ambulance services. One is bundled rates, and that's the way we do it. So, we have various service levels, which I've included in the analysis I provide you. And then there's à la carte services, which are incredibly complicated. So, if you go for ambulance ride, and we give you oxygen, the oxygen is an add-on fee. If you use cardiac monitor, it's an add-on fee. And the billing process for that is incredibly complicated. However, you can make more money doing that, and some people actually still do that. So, when I get these ambulance rates in from all these regional fire departments, some people still do à la carte, and some people do the bundled rates. So, I have to take all those à la carte people and model their rates to do a comparison. So, I'm not going to lie to you, I don't do it. My administrative assistant, Andrew, who's extremely talented, does it. So, and that's how we come up with our regional analysis. We set everybody at like rates. So, we went through that this year, and the policy we'd used in the past is we followed the Medicare rates. Well, Medicare, for those of you that are in the healthcare profession, they don't adjust the rates. In fact, this year, they did a .02 rate increase. Doesn't cover the cost doing business. For years, we followed that model, and what happened was, we fell way, way behind all the other regional, the regional averages. And also, what we were looking at was, every year, we'd make projections on our ambulance revenue, it supports part of the fire department budget, but the leftovers, for lack of a better term, are what we use for our capital acquisitions, ambulances, cardiac monitors, stretcher systems, although we received a $70,000 grant for that. So, that's how we buy the pieces and parts. So, under the old rate system, we weren't going to be able to meet those capital needs. Basically, we've come to, if we stayed on that model and said, I don't have any money to buy an ambulance, but we need one. So, we weighed all those out, with the current program, current rates. This year, based on the rate increases you approved last year, we increased our revenue so far this year by about 18%. So, that makes us really healthy again. So, we're on track right now to be able to purchase an ambulance, and probably FY19 may get pushed out because we're having some good luck with the ambulances we're buying now. So, we're healthy again, based on those rates. When I did the analysis last year, I started really early, and I was actually using FY15 rates in my analysis. Since then, we've had two rate increases through our region, so the rates actually have climbed up, and that was part, part, I think, what Mark's question was, that he asked me over the weekend, is how come we went like this, now we're going like this? It's really what we're doing is we're catching up. All right? That's the meat and potatoes of it. So, the rates I've suggested will keep us healthy. I do not anticipate a large increase next year. We'll have to see what the region does. There is some talk about some more regulations coming into EMS rates. I think it's needed. There are some AG cases right now with private firms who, if you looked at our rates, we'd be at the bargain basement compared to them. So, I do believe that that's true, but at the same time, when those rates go into effect, we'll make sure that they keep us healthy. So, the Fire Chief Association of Massachusetts has been very active in that debate. Actually, Eric Lesser helped us out last year when there was kind of an attack by the insurance companies on it. So, that's kind of where we're at. I've given you the recommended rates. I can read them out if you want, or field questions, so...
Any questions?
Yeah. It's going to sound like I'm being negative.
But I know you, so...
Well, I sat down and I read it, and, you know, you said, you're right, we do fantastic in our collection, undoubtedly, 96% collectible revenue. And you said in FY17, we're looking at 16% increase. And when I read through your thing, I understood all that, and I understand all the competitive rates. What I didn't understand was the need side of it. This was the revenue side of it. But I didn't see anything that clearly told me why the rates were having to go up, other than we're behind the other people.
No, actually, so, we were actually behind internally. So, if you look at, roughly, we fund 25% of the fire department budget every year, and we have our capital request. So, based on the FY16 rate structure, we weren't going to be able to meet any of those capital needs going forward. We were basically just making enough to supplement the fire department budget. So, that's why we did the rate initial rate increase. And we discussed to actually do this big jump all at one time last year, myself, the town manager, and Mr. Prosturzak talked it over, and we thought it was too much to chomp off all at once. So, we spread it out, knowing that we'd do more analysis. So, it does take, it does model our business, so knowing what we'll collect to meet our capital needs going forward.
What I kept looking for was what you're saying.
Yeah, actually, well, I have the cap, I have the cap request in table five.
I see that, but I didn't see the revenue figures. Because, you know, you say you went up 17%, anybody would think that's a pretty good increase.
I can give them to you, Richard.
No, no, I mean, I wanted to look at them in the thing, didn't I?
Yeah, actually, well, we, so we, we track stuff like you wouldn't believe.
Yeah, I know you do. And so, you went up 17, or 16%, and you're proposing now, looks like 16, and 14, and 12, and 14 on the different things, but the mileage is going up like 30%.
Right. Yeah, so we were way behind on the mileage.
But are we losing anything? I mean, I know you're behind.
Yep.
But that doesn't, I, that's why I've got to be careful how I say this.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm following.
That really doesn't mean a lot to me unless you need the money. If you come in and you say, look, these are my needs, and these rates support my needs, and it's a wash, but it seemed like the emphasis here was that we're behind everybody else so that we have to push up...
Yeah, I'm not looking at it as a for-profit business. Even though our, we may raise a rate 14%, all right, doesn't mean we're going to get 14% more revenue, it doesn't equate that way.
No, I know it doesn't. You're right.
Because I can say I'm going to charge $500 for an ambulance call, but Medicare is going to adjust me down for 33% of my costs.
Yeah, well, about 50% of your revenue comes from insurance, so that's locked in pretty good.
Right.
The, what was the other services?
So, the other services are intercepts, when we intercept, which we don't do a lot of, but we do some of it, and settlements.
Settlement.
So, we do, a lot of the settlements come from motor vehicle accidents, where there's either uninsured party or third-party passenger, where it goes through the legal process, and we get a check that's non-insurance. It's from a third-party insurance, goes, basically goes through the court.
Okay. But do you understand the questions I was asking, chief?
Yeah, I absolutely do. And the analysis is based on that, and that's why we basically adjust the rates. We're not charging the highest of levels. We look at the averages, we see what's compatible, and then we model it out, the cost, are they going to meet our capital needs going forward?
Well, capital needs and the operational costs. I'm not, I'm not so sure that the program, I don't know, maybe it was intended to fit all the capital needs. I don't know if that's how you originally set it up or not.
Originally set up only for capital needs.
Only for capital, no personnel?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I should say, just two ambulance people and the capital needs back there.
And I do know you're expanding your program because you came in for a base increase this year for position.
Right.
And that was for ambulance, that was for an ambulance operation.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess I do know that our population's getting older by the day, so your run frequency is likely starting to tick up.
It is.
Yeah. No, I'm talking to John.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we've been averaging about a 3% increase over the last, well, I think, I'm not all, six years. This past year, we had a 6%, which I think was a spike.
Yeah.
Because we're actually starting to level out again this year, doing 3%.
Yeah. I guess overall, the whole thing is, the fact is, we all feel like we're getting nearer the end of the road on expenditures, and we know the medical things are going skyrocket.
Yeah, I agree, but the cost doing this business is skyrocketing, too.
Yeah.
You know, I think I gave you a comparison, the cost comparison of the ambulance, 2012, an ambulance is $205,000. I'm looking at 265 next year. Cardiac monitor, very first one, was $14,000.
Right.
We just spent $49,000.
Yeah. Yeah, much better equipment, though, isn't it?
It, you know, we're bringing ambulance room, the ambulance room, the emergency room to your house.
Right.
And the skill levels, you know, what my people can do pre-hospital now, I mean, we're doing, there's, some of them are surgical interventions, I mean, they're very aggressive things, but they'll save your life.
Right. Okay, I'm going to vote in favor of the thing. I mean, I just wanted to have the discussion because I, I would like to see more of the other side of the picture that supports the rate structure.
Yeah, and listen, I'm all for it, whatever you need to, because...
That's personally me.
I get, listen, I get it.
Yeah.
I, like I say, I'm pleased to see that the only rate that is higher than the Western Mass average is one that isn't used.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, so the specialty care transport, we, by DPH regulation, we have to, we have to list that, but we don't provide it. That's the interfacility transfers.
Sorry, I just took it, Tom.
Well, I just was wondering, you know, in terms of ambulances that service people in our community, do we service everybody, or there's still a percentage of ambulances, private ambulances that come into town?
There are.
And do they, any estimate about how many, how much there is?
Yeah, actually, table two, I gave you a private provider comparison, and that was based on some older data, because the private ambulance companies do not give their data up. They are the subject to all the cases and wherever right now. And those are the complaints, and I did put in the write-up. I get, we have folks in town, because of a short-term, longer-term medical issue, they use our services a lot. And from time to time, we dispatch a private ambulance to the residents because our resources are otherwise tied up. And those are the calls I get the most. I get your bill, and it's this much, and I just got this private company bill, and oh my gosh, what are these people doing to me? And that happens on a pretty regular basis. So, my goal and my budget this year, which I hope I communicated to you, is I want to reduce the amount of those private ambulances coming into town and service. We'll never eliminate it. I can't eliminate those four calls that happen in 10 minutes. And, I mean, just fiscally or financially, it'd be unrealistic to do that. But, that second call, and that third call, when I'm doing my turnovers with my ambulances, I should be able to handle that. So, at least for the daytime, which is a majority of our calls, under the new structure, in FY19, I should be handling most of those calls.
Great. Thank you.
That's actually the point I was going to make, was keeping the rates competitive, and the new structure that we talked about in the budget, will reduce the number of times a private ambulance responds to a call in our town, and they get lower quality service for a substantially higher cost. And that's one of the service, because I was tying to the call volumes, but you guys just made the point, so I don't stop.
Mark?
Chief, I appreciate you giving me the information over time and the explanation you had. I guess I'm following up on Mr. Foster's comments, and I guess my question to you would be, you know, and maybe it's not for you, maybe it's for all of us, is, what's our goal of having this service in town? And the fact that I use the word "service" tells me it's to provide a service to our residents. It's not to be a profit center, it's not to make money on a resident. And so, I guess the question that's in this comment is, have we recently or ever gone back to say, you know, what if we split the fire department and its real costs from the EMS department and its real costs, adding in, you know, an appropriate capital requirement, which is replacing the ambulances in a timely manner, replacing the equipment, you know? And if we did that and said, okay, and we're going to estimate a run volume, and therefore, it's, you know, here's how much it costs, here's the number of runs, boom, here's the cost. You know, is that something that could ever be done? And if we did that, is your estimate saying it'd go up, it'd go down, or it's pretty close to what you've got now?
So, it's been, we wouldn't be the first people at the, at home plate with that one. Other people have tried it, there's been different models that have been attempted. In most of, if, or if not all that have tried it, are back at our model. So, I guess there's some lessons to be learned there. The two services are so intermingled with, with both the people, the quality of the service, that to try to actually separate, you'd be talking to, bringing down to fifteen-minute increments during the day. Because a guy might, a crew might be going from a fire alarm, then they go and they help, they do a lift assist for someone, which may not show up as a EMS call, but it's an EMS-related because they're evaluating that person. They're using those EMS skill sets, it doesn't show up on any EMS, that's an assist-a-resident call. You know, um, you know, assisting a person that's, that's stuck in a wheelchair. But they're using those medical skills, so it's just so intermingled now that. And we, and we've actually, Steve and I have had some discussions, is there a point where you don't have a firefighter, paramedic, maybe you hire a paramedic and they're not a firefighter?
And that's, that's not necessarily the question I'm asking, you know, you, I know you've worked here long enough to, you remember when, when it was a private ambulance service, and we had, you know, the ambulance guy sitting over at the, at Forest Park, and we brought this in, and, and so, you know, one could say, gee, if we went back to a fire-only department, you know, people, you know, would we have fewer people, would we have whatever it is? And then you say, okay, but that's, you know, so that sets that cost, and now you build on it, here's the other, including taking those firefighters and having them at a higher level of service, skills and a higher level of pay for that base of people, plus all the additional staff you have, plus all that capital. That's the kinda difference I, you know, I was trying to, to get some feeling for of whether or not the, the, the rates we charge here make some sense. Because the, the disconnect for me is how much of the overall, you know, emergency medical or emergency response team that this ambulance income subsidizes is appropriate. And there is no answer to that, it, it's whatever we think is, is the right amount.
It'd be a lag, yeah.
There's, there's no right answer.
Well, I, I think you're looking at trying to carve the data in a different way. And, and I, I get that, and you did that on a lot of subjects that we talked about, about looking, analyzing it from a different perspective. I would just say, in defense of the chief, it's not whatever we feel like. There's a ton of data and justifications to back up the rate, it's just a different way of analyzing it than what you're talking about.
Yeah, I, I guess.
It's not arbitrary and capricious, it is data-driven, just a different analysis.
Okay, but, but it gets back to my fundamental question, which is, is, you know, if you tried to do it that way, is your sense that, you know, whether you do it this way or this way, you pretty much come out with the same number, or you would come out with a substantially different, different cost structure, depending on the approach you took, I guess?
Yeah, to, I mean, to, and again, it comes back to what I was trying to explain before, to try to break, to peel back the onion, and all the different services and how they're intertwined is so difficult to actually say, this is what the fire, I could tell you what it would cost just to have a straight fire department in town. Depending on what the level of service you want, you're not gonna reduce people that much. And, because your ISO rating and everything else will suffer. So, you'll have, and then you'll have an EMS people, which you're, you're probably gonna have to increase people in that because we, you know, we're really the model for our community. If a private company was going to come in here, they'd, you know, we would insist on them having two ambulances at a minimum because that's the quality service we should expect. So, you're gonna have a bigger animal than what actually we have now. Where now, we have cross-trained people, they can do just about anything from the fire rescue and the EMS side, so. So, to try to separate it and, and come out with, with that data, I, I, I just think, I, I think it's really difficult to do. I, I, I take the data, I look at the revenue generated, we have, we do, we know we're doing a quarter of the, the fire department budget with, with the revenue, so we set that aside. We know it's offsetting twenty-five percent of the expense to the residents. We believe that's a pretty accurate representation, or at least it's a goal that's set every year. And then we, we know that the revenue will carry on based on where we're going, where the direction we're going, and not where we were going to cover those, those capital costs going forward, so I'm comfortable with that, so.
A real off-the-wall question, not off-the-wall, but off the subject. You don't, you don't have much for turnover in your department?
Not as, not as much as most people do, we, we, and I have, but I have more than I want.
But, I mean, can you contribute, contribute to that, to possibly the way we're set up with all the, uh, the training that we give our people and the crossovers that we have, and the level of expertise that, that the men find it entertaining and the ladies?
Well, I think the difference with our organization, Richard, is that, and I, and, and to your point, is, and I, I've used this example a hundred times, you know, when I was a captain, I had, I had a day where I, I started off by doing a motor vehicle accident on Route ninety-one and using the jaws of life. An hour later, I was in the Connecticut River on a rescue boat, and I was in the ambulance doing a couple really difficult medical calls. And later that night, I, I was on one of our streets of the structured fire. I did the, my entire career in one day. And that's, um, and, and our, our people are trained to do that, and they have those opportunities. So, that does attract people. They're not a firefighter that's gonna sit in the same seat and be worried about the same one hose line and out of one station during the day, they're, they're part of a, a bigger picture. Off-duty, they respond back, I mean, there's never a big call they're gonna miss. It's, it's a more of a team atmosphere than, you know, a lot of the other departments, and, you know, and I, you know, Stephen's intimately aware of, you know, when we've had these bigger incidents, you know, my whole department comes back, I mean, I'm not lack of support. And I'm blessed, I mean, with those people. We are, we do have a lot of turnover coming up because of retirements and things like that. I'm actually running a job fair to try to, to start telling people about my department. You know, everybody thinks it's a little long meadow. But, we have a great product here that we give to our residents, and I wanna be able to tell these rock stars that are out there, that are up-and-coming firefighters and paramedics, you know, here's a good place to work, and I wanna attract those. So, we put that out, uh, Thursday, we have twenty-one people registered for it already.
That's good.
So.
Can I just build on his point there, because, you know, we don't get many opportunities to, to do this? What he didn't say, he's being modest, is the tremendous leadership and phenomenal, he mentioned team environment, but, um, just the brotherhood that they have there and the leadership that's been shown, you know, certainly by former Chief Madison and the captains, but, and now Chief Dearborn, in building a, a really tight-knit team environment that does support each other, and it really is a, a phenomenal department, and it could hold its own against any. And one of, a key ingredient in that model that makes it such a great department, makes it one people wanna come work here and stay here, is that the, the select board, the town leadership, and, and the town meeting invest in and support the fire department as well. And so, I wanna, you know, brag on you guys and town meeting as being a big part of the success that a lot of the fire department has had, and, you know, and I think that, we don't, we don't say enough positive things about the work we do, but that is a clear, to me, there's a clear connection between the investment the community makes and the leadership that the department is able to do.
I'm gonna place a motion, we approve the rate structure submitted by our fire chief.
Second.
Further discussion?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, further discussion?
Yes.
No.
All of us in favor? I wanna thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
And I think one of the things you pointed out is what we really need to emphasize here in town. We always talk about what great schools we have, but the ambulance service is top rate. And as we have an aging population, people have to realize that is a wonderful gift that's given to our residents.
Yeah, the fire service in general, last year, we had a, still an increase in actual fire incidents, but our dollar loss went from over a million dollars the year before to just under two hundred thousand last year. That's because our fire, we have a full-time fire, fire, fire department, and they're, they're under five minutes, and they're well-equipped, well-trained. So, they're making, you know, on that side, I also make an impact too, so. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we're, item number three, the consulting proposal can be removed. So, we're on town meeting forum follow-up. Did, is there something you wanted to say on that, Stephen?
You know, the reminder that there's another one on the twenty-sixth. I just wanted to start making some notes. So, um, I just, I thought the session went very well, you and Richard were there. And I think the biggest thing is Weston Sampson, I don't think is gonna be available to make the presentation on the twenty-sixth that they gave on the eleventh.
They are going to be?
Or not.
Or not, oh, but do they?
So, we, we're gonna have to, I, I, and maybe a member of the DPW committee will have to, to give it in their place. But, they made an excellent presentation, I think LCTV did record it. And then I thought the moderator did a very nice job organizing people in the groups. We were there, town staff was there, kinda floating around to answer detailed questions. I am in the process of preparing a few executive summaries on some of the articles that have generated more discussion. I'll be hopefully getting those finished, it'll probably be early next week now. They're mostly done, I, I do need to, a lot of questions were asked about MN domain. And that's something we've talked a lot about here, but it, you know, I don't think that message is filtered into the community. So, I need to add some language to the DPW project executive summary about MN domain. But we were, people asked about the impact on tax rates and water rates, and Paul Pasterzic was there, kinda giving the information. People asked about, you know, operational considerations, Mario was there to kinda provide those answers. And we talked, I think, for over an hour about the DPW, and I think, um, kinda walking around and looking at people. I think people who came in either neutral or opposed definitely saw the benefits of the project. I think if nothing else, they saw the exhaustive amount of analysis and research and planning that went into what is, what is being proposed. And I think some of the people were, if not convinced, at least better understood that, you know, there really aren't many choices out there, really isn't any other choice for us at this time. We had some discussion after about the other warrant articles, and I thought good questions were asked about some of the others. And like I said, I think the moderator did a nice job, it was a, a creative format. I think the smaller groups led to better, more detailed conversations. She had some volunteer facilitators and note-takers, and I wanna thank them for volunteering and helping out. But I said, oh, no, it was a good session, I think, again, people should really register, or at least notify the moderator that they plan to attend the one on the twenty-sixth. And hopefully have another good discussion, and like, and, um, you get people the, the detailed information that may be difficult to glean from a town floor debate.
Any other comments or questions on the forum?
I mean, I just didn't hear you guys take them.
No, it went, it went very smooth, there was a lot of good questions, a lot of really good questions. And there, there seemed to be a lot of satisfied folks at the end of it, and it was a lot of food.
Yeah, I know. You know, and it, it's one thing I was, and again, I sound like I'm throwing bouquets now myself, but I had a conversation with somebody else today about town meeting, and what the forum really reminded me was that our community does get engaged, or when our community gets engaged on a particular issue, they get informed, they try to make rational, data-driven decisions. They may not agree with the information, they may, they may just decide that the impact on tax bill is too much for them to bear, and there's no amount of data that's gonna convince them that it's worth doing. But at least they, they show up, they listen, and then they make their decision. And I thought there was a lot of that that night, that people who were on the fence or just were, felt uninformed to that point, you know, got a lot of information out of it and heard a lot of it, so I wanna, you know, it's a credit to the community that we even had, you know, um, I don't know if you made the comment to you, but the folks from Weston Sampson have said they've been to plenty of type, those similar-type meetings, set up their boards, set up their PowerPoint, and literally no one showed up. And so, to have fifty-something people, or however many you ended up having, in the same room on that, on a random Tuesday night, especially during a Jewish holiday, was great. And like I said, I expect we'll have as good or better on the twenty-sixth.
And I might wanna add, the DPW committee is meeting down the hall tonight as we are meeting here, so. They're still, they're still at it.
Yep.
They're very active.
And I think everyone who comes in, everyone says, "Oh, we don't wanna spend that type of money." And then, at the end of the session, they realize, well, sometimes you have to. And it, it wasn't as if they're building the Taj Mahal or there were options, but they realized how thoughtful the process went through and that there were answers to all the questions. I also like the fact that they did the other warrant articles, you know, the Commerce Street project was discussed, people asked questions about the stormwater utility. And in fact, I have this, I know you're doing the executive summary, I found this on the internet today, and it was really a great description, and it's actually from the EPA, of what's happening. And about updating these permits are critical to ensuring the Massachusetts continues to enjoy clean water, healthy environment. Another great, great quote was, "Development implement, enforce a stormwater management program to control pollutants has to be done by every single town." So, I got a copy for everyone to see, and I thought I'd give that to you tonight because there's a lot of important articles that, um, I wanted Stephen to have the highlighted one.
Natural.
That we need to deal with, uh, coming up to the, uh, town meeting. No, okay, and I'll, I'll give one to you. Oh, back to Debbie, yeah.
Oh, is this yours, Deb?
So, the one thing about the presentation that Weston Sampson gives, and, and they are gonna give it again at town meeting, I, I, you know, we talked about maybe shortening it for town meeting, but because it's a big decision, their presentation is, and it, it's heavily informed by the DPW committee, but it really walks, if you knew nothing about the project on the first slide, it very, and I think in an efficient way, walks you through, you know, how the design got to where it was, why the costs are what they are in the marketplace, what are the needs, what are the things that we aren't including for the sake of efficiency and getting the smallest building we possibly can, what are the consequences of cutting back to, you know, cutting back from where we are, what are the consequences of inaction? Why can't the current site be developed? I mean, all the questions we've heard, they did an amazing job, an amazingly detailed job in putting that in a presentation, but the presentation flows in such a way that really, it's like, um, you know, it's a small world at Disney, at Disney World, it kinda takes you through each different thing in a seamless way. And I, I hope people will, and like I said, if you don't, aren't able to make it to forums, I think they, I've asked the moderator for a little longer than normal that we give for presentations because it's such an important decision for the community, and the information is so important, I don't know what we could cut.
But it's on the website, too.
It's also on the website, but I think hearing it, hearing, especially Jeff Alberti take you through it, with his, I mean, Weston Sampson's done so many of these, you know, they, if somebody asks you a question, they can give you five previous projects or ten previous projects that they experienced, you know, a negative outcome from doing something or a positive outcome from doing the other.
The two things I liked best was there was, there was a slide that broke down the cost every single step of the way. And I thought that was fabulous. And also what he said, which I had never thought of before, the financial risk that we're now taking with the DPW down there now, he listed, I think, three or four DPWs in Massachusetts that just caught on fire and burned down. And all of a sudden, you had a financial crisis of how to deal with that. And then we talked about, we called Paul over, Paul Pasterzic, to say, "Where's our insurance?" He says, "Well, hold it, you can't insure it, you know, right now it's uninsurable." And, uh, so we are at this huge, and I never even thought of that aspect of it. So, I found it edifying for myself, even though I've been listening and following the project for years now. It was very good.
Well, I think that in those slides show, and one of the focuses of emphasis is, it's, it's buildings catching on fire, also buildings collapsing. It's not the building, it's the fleet.
And it's also the employees.
You know, a million dollars worth of vehicles in the middle of winter, they don't, you can't go to the lot at the dealership and be like, "Hey, give me that, you know, three-ton double-axle dump truck with that giant plow and spreader, we'll take it, we'll drive it home." It doesn't work that way, they take months, it takes months to get them delivered after you've ordered them. And so, if you lose the fleet because of a collapse or a fire or something like that, people, people pitch in and help, but you've lost a season of work.
And it's cost you.
And, and so, I think that's, and it's not a scare tactic, I mean, I think what, you know, I don't feel like we're trying to scare them into approving the DPW. All we're trying to do is say, "Well, what happens if we don't do it?" Well, this is a very real risk that we've been running for quite some time for inaction. And people, you know, someone, I think one of the reporters was there, said, you know, what, and I think I may have mentioned this here before, "What happens if it doesn't pass?" And, and my answer, for myself anyway, is, if it doesn't pass, it means we just didn't do a good enough job explaining it to the town of what the consequences of inaction are and how we really don't have any, any options at our disposal. Especially if it doesn't pass and the owner of Grand Meadow sells it to somebody else, and that gets developed, then that site is untouchable from a financial standpoint, and we're back to looking at other town-owned sites. I don't think anybody wants to go back to that place. And so, there's a lot of, um, negative consequences for, for, for inaction. And I think, Richard made the comments, you know, this is probably the most studied thing in the history of the town. And I think that the, um, presentation shows the level of, of analysis that, that's gone into it.
Any other questions or comments in the forum? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which is financial policies and task force. Since we did so well in closing up the budget early, I thought we would go back to this, these issues that we had been talking about. And that was, um, in the fall, we talked about putting together a task force or something to have a comprehensive approach to our pension and OPEB unfunded liabilities. And, um, wanted to see how the select board felt about putting that together. One of the ideas I think we had was whether, of course, it would be one or two members of the select board would be leading it. You could have a finance committee on it, you could have other members of our town, and we could also regionalize this. Because this is a problem East Long Meadow's having, Hampton, Wilberham. And I wanted input in how the board felt about establishing the task force and moving forward. So, we don't just put cash away every year, but we look at all the different tools in the toolbox to try to solve these unfunded liability issues.
Has there been any interest shown from the, the regional aspect?
I don't think we've, uh, really approached them yet. I was looking to maybe have another, uh, regional meeting. I just don't wanna have a regional meeting, have a regional meeting. If we wanted to, we could reach out and see how people feel about it. I think I had mentioned it to one, uh, councilman from East Long Meadow, but that was just in a casual conversation. But I have not approached anyone, because we really have to do.
Some issues undoubtedly are regional, and, and others are individual.
Statewide, nationwide.
Yeah, nationwide, yeah.
I mean, MMA has done some work on this.
Yeah.
There are a handful of communities that are fully funded. fully funded, but, you know, there's still, I'm sure, 330, 340 communities in Massachusetts that are not fully funded.
Oh, just on OPEB.
Yeah.
And it's not just funding. There are actual things that we can adopt, or a pension board can adopt, that can help, you know, bring this down or control it a bit. Mark?
Maria, I'm just concerned that pension and OPEB, although they sound closely related, are sufficiently different that we might want to focus on them separately with two different groups that may have some overlap. And I say that because perhaps we can take some forward steps on one a lot more quickly than the other based on, you know, legislative allowances and local, you know, capabilities.
So you want to have a task force on one and see how that goes before we pick up the other one?
That's my desire and I, you know.
Which would you pick first?
I'd pick pension first only because OPEB's got a lot of other people looking at it that, you know, we may or may not be able to act on independently. But the pension, you know, there are some constraints by the Commonwealth, but yet there is a Longmeadow, you know, plan, there is a Hampton County Board, and it seems a lot more local than this more nebulous OPEB kind of thing that you're dealing with things like, you know, national medical costs and things that are way beyond our pay grade.
It's going to take legislative action even on pension reform, though, isn't it?
But, but how you manage it may be able to be done locally. And more importantly, I think you're more likely to get, be able to address it through a potential home rule kind of approach to pension rather than OPEB, which is, I think, more of a regional, statewide, national, whatever, plan. I only say it because we probably can bite it off a little bit, you know, it's.
It gives you the opportunity to get our representatives in on it, too. Because we have talked about the pension reform as being a major one. I agree, OPEB is big, too. But pension reform, if we don't stop it or reform it, it's.
And there's a couple of approaches, Richard. There's clearly the issue of pension reform as you spoke about, you know, but there's also the issue of policies and investments and all that kind of stuff. So those, both can, you know, it's like the top line and the bottom line, you know, the numerator and the denominator, you go after both of them.
Right.
So is there, how does everyone feel about then establishing a regional task force on pension and then seeing if people are interested?
Why don't we start locally and see if we can, see what we want to do before we bring in the rest of the region?
Because you're going to hit a point in like the third minute of the discussion that there's no, Longmeadow can't unilaterally impact this in a major way anyway. And so without a regional coalition built, you know, put together to look at these issues.
You'll get a louder voice.
It's going to be a little, it's going to be a little bit of whistle and Dixie because, I mean, the, they're both huge issues and they both impact so many people that you, I do think we need a much more broad-based solution. I think a regional task force to identify the barriers to pension reform and to identify the pressures of health insurance that then they can bring to policymakers that are above our pay grade to say, these are the things we're bumping into, how do we fix these, would be one way to do it. Because, you know, I mean, it's, you know, the pension contributions that we have to make every year are, you know, increased by a lack of performance from the market. And there was a time where, you know, Longmeadow, I think, got involved with trying to direct the pension, the investment decisions of the Hampton County Retirement Board. It didn't work out. They actually ended up doing worse by adopting recommendations. And so, and then, of course, health insurance is driven by health insurance companies. So what's our, what is, I just want to make sure that we are being targeted with what we're trying to do.
But Stephen, your comment that, you know, pensions are driven by investments, I mean, you know, my few, very few, but trips to the Pension Board meetings told me that their investment with the PRIG in Boston had a seven-point-something percent return, but after the local expenses, it became 0.2%. I mean, the town of Longmeadow would have been better off investing in Boston, just doing, taking the money ourselves. And so, you know, it's not just that. There's issues.
I think that's, well, I don't want to argue it all here, but I think, I think that, that's the thing. It can be easily oversimplified, but there's no doubt that the actual solutions, the actual problems are monolithic. And I think, I mean, if you want to start locally, that's fine, because the other part of this component is it's fine to say, oh, this stuff, we want to reduce this, reduce our pressures. The local impact, you're cutting services or making it, making it difficult to recruit and retain qualified employees because you end up not offering competitive benefits. And that's, that's the dark place that this ends up without some change above us happening in the system, which needs to happen. I agree with all you. That needs to happen. I just don't know what we can do.
Okay.
Right, Maria, if regional is the way, but I think that if you don't get others interested, I wouldn't let that deter us.
Oh, definitely not.
Sure.
Definitely not. I mean, we put the invite out and see if other people are going to come. They might show up at one or two meetings and then roll it out.
Well, let's ask them, that's, one of the things is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, I don't know that they have a specific program on this. One of the things they are good at is getting people in the same room.
No, I think we could do it without bringing Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in, yeah. And so is there a feeling on the rest of the board on establishing the task force?
No, I'm in support of it.
Yeah. Okay. How do you feel? Should we call it pension and OPEB and start with pension and then roll into OPEB or just start with pension and then deal with OPEB if we feel it's a successful group?
OPEB is going to fall into the discussion even if it's not in the title.
Okay.
Because they're going to, it's going to migrate there. They're going to take on everything sooner or later. So call pension reform. I think that rings a little better with everybody now.
Retiree benefits reform.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. That, that sounds good. So is that a motion? Is there a motion to establish the regional task force for retiree benefits? How did you say retiree benefits?
Retiree benefits task, regional retiree benefits task force.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Do I have a volunteer, two, or even two volunteers from the board? You'd like to do it? Anyone else on the board like to be part of the task force?
Marie.
Okay, I'll go with you, Mark.
You guys have the time to fool with it? Not only fool with it, but it's going to involve, how about you, Bill?
What?
On the committee.
I'm happy to. I thought there were already three people.
No, no, there's not. There's just Mark now.
Oh, oh. Sure.
Oh, okay. All right, great.
And we know, Marie, you're going to be bugging around in there anyway.
I'll just stick my nose in everything. That's it. That's fabulous. Now, the other thing I wanted to bring up is financial policies. I know that we've been going through our policies and, on a step-by-step basis, but I was wondering, I was thinking about putting together a subcommittee to really look at putting together a set of financial subpolicies that would deal with the taxes and deal with how we're going to break, get, roll off of the rising up 2.5%. And the reason I thought about that is that we came up with, we got an email from Paul Pasterzik saying that we got a little more money than we expected from the state. And I was thinking, if we had a policy in place that said, when we get in more money than we expect and we've already balanced the budget, that money could be put towards decreasing our tax rate. Or we could look at free cash in the fall. We have a policy together that says, so much money, after so much money, it goes into stabilization fund. So I was thinking of getting a subcommittee together of the board who just sits down and thinks about what we could put together in the way, policies to try to.
Did I even show you my little puppy?
Yeah, I don't, I saw the number and I don't, I don't see how that's going to impact taxes.
It's not much. It's going to be much, but if we keep putting little things against it, then we can start. Then there's at least a systematic approach to try to deal with the 2.5%. Or the subcommittee would be looking at other policies such as, what are we going to do? We, as a board, said we were only going to use the money for the enterprise fund if it goes through stormwater to deal with the MS4 requirements. Now, we don't have a policy to that effect or what we would do and what projects would go on that. So I think there's space for us to be writing new financial policies that we haven't even considered yet. Do you want a subcommittee to do that? Or do you want us to just keep bringing that under policy review and bring in new policies that way?
What happens now to that money?
What money? It just gets, rolls into free cash eventually for the fall, right?
No, not necessarily. I mean, we, we haven't set the tax rate. So the town, the town budget is the budget that we've approved for, to go before town meeting. If that budget is passed, it assumes a certain income, which includes some state aid. You know, after we pass the town budget, the state will pass their budget. They always do afterwards. So sometime in the fall, we're going to have a fall town meeting. And now we're going to have the real budget. And the real budget will be the expenditures, which we, is all we really approve at town meeting, and then the revenue. And the revenue is going to include, you know, the absolute, what the state's approved for revenue. If our other projections for other sources of revenue, motor vehicle excise tax, miscellaneous revenues, fees, all that kind of stuff hold true, then next November, when Paul asks us to set the tax rate, we have a choice. Do we say, well, you know, we're going to set the tax rate at 2.5% above what it was last year because we can? Or are we going to say, gee, we don't actually need to have the same amount of tax revenue because we have more state aid revenue, therefore our tax revenue will go down that much and we'll, if you will, tax it less than 2.5%? For the last seven years, the argument's always been, yeah, but we need the money for everything that comes up at the fall town meeting. But it's up to us when we set the tax rate and we set the town, fall town meeting, to say, great, we got all this other revenue or, you know, everybody in town buys a new car and the motor vehicle excise tax revenue zooms way up. And we say, we don't actually have to raise the taxes, the amount that Paul Pasterzik has, had, you know, had projected in the budget that we prepared. And therefore taxes are only going to go up 2% or whatever it is. So one's got nothing to do with the other.
Yeah, but how many times do we do that?
Zero.
Yes.
And that's just because every fall town meeting, there's, we want, pardon me, money for this study or that study and, you know, pay for, pay for other things because we just don't have the discipline to say no and we've got the money. I mean, the argument, I, and you've heard me say it, when did Prop 2.5 go from being a 2.5% maximum to being a 2.5% minimum? Because that's what it's been in this town for the last 15, 20 years.
That's why I thought if we start putting some policies in place, people don't have to follow the policy if they run into a problem, but at least it's, it gives the direction that if we're not going to bring down the tax rate, we have to have a discussion why we're not doing it. Stephen?
So I, I mean, I suppose it could be a worthwhile exercise, but I think at the end, because the select board doesn't make the final spending decisions, you know, the policies are going to, and it could be perceived as an attempt to manage by policy. And I think it's already a struggle in the annual budgeting process to fund the current policies you have, which are good policies, by the way. It's already a struggle to meet those policies. And so if you add more policies of trying to either not raise as much revenue or set aside certain amount of funds to do certain things, it's going to be an annual struggle to do that, or you're going to be in a position of, like we were last year, of not funding your own policies sufficiently. And, and then, of course, there's the what happens at town meeting. If the select board says, our new policy, our new budgetary policy is we're not going to increase taxes more than 2% a year, that's fine. That's, we talked about the directive, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. But what happens at town meeting? If the citizens then go ahead and raise the full amount because they want the services, then the control of the recommendation of the budget is now taken out of the select board's hands for that last half a percent and put in the hands of town, and put in the hands of town meeting. And that's, that's, that's the nature of a system of government. But is that really the best way to do it?
Well, I think until we had the policies of increasing capital, increasing OPEB, we were not doing those things. And so I think there is a purpose to having policies in there because then we really have to have a serious discussion instead of saying, well, we're going to go up 2.5% because the town will just end up taking the money anyways. Because we have to have those difficult decisions. We're ready to hit the wall anyways. We have to find some way to take the steam out of the engine.
We also have to eliminate the special articles, the money articles in the fall town meeting that we have because, you know, we have free cash, so we'll spend free cash. I mean, we, we're the, we, the select board and the town and we're, we don't have the discipline to say, you know, there's cash left over from the last fiscal year, let's just, you know, use it to reduce our taxes or stick it in the bank. Instead, we say, well, it's free cash. And we think the word free means it's actually no cost to us and therefore we spend the money.
Not totally, totally true because Paul Pasterzik's come in and done some pretty good stuff with free cash. I mean, you know, he's.
We paid down bands.
He's paid down bands.
We put in the stabilization fund, we've done other ways.
I'd like the public to understand, though, I mean, there's a lot of thought goes into the free cash. It's not, it's not a, it's not a federal government. This is a local government. And there's been a lot of good steps, Mark, towards the end.
But we've also done a lot of, a lot of studies and the answer is, one way or the other, we spend it. And even, and I, to a large extent, have supported Paul, Paul's recommendations to, you know, pay off bands and pay off money. But when you do that, you know, I mean, down the road, it's going to save you money somewhere else. But, but ultimately it causes your tax rate that year to remain at the 2.5% level.
But your, your statement implies that we never needed those studies before. And that's where I kind of object to it because there's studies that needed to be done. We were looking for a funding source. And I just don't want the people to think the wrong way on that.
But it seems to, you know, there's some truth to the statement that the expenses in the fall town meeting expand to meet the amount of money available, whether it's free cash or whatever it is, as opposed to saying, we're, you know, we're not going to spend all the money that, that becomes available. I mean, every year for the last three or four years, the state, you know, cherry sheet money has exceeded our meaning, you know, intentionally conservative estimate at fall town meeting, period of time. And yet it hasn't resulted in a, in a tax rate below the full 2.5% levy limit.
But I agree with you 100%, but that, that decision on the tax rate is something we have to make a decision on, period. Then we make all the other decisions on the budget based on the revenue. Because there's no such thing as having every need met in this community. You know, you have got a job jar full of stuff that you'd like to put money on. And everybody does. We, the farther you get into our local government, the more you understand the needs and where we can spend money. So it's the fact is, we do raise a project up and say, we'll fund that. So I just want to make sure people aren't thinking we're just doling out Christmas cash. That's not it. The needs are here. We can't afford them. And we occasionally do pull one up and say, let's fund this one this year with free cash, put X amount in reserves, pay down the bands, et cetera.
And we do that based on, because we're allowed, because state law allows the town to raise taxes up to 2.5%.
I agree.
If the state law only allowed us to raise taxes up to 2%, it was likely that some of that stuff that we fund wouldn't get funded.
And we did put a policy in that we, we tried to roll it back, what, two and a half, three years ago, and it didn't make it. Because we got, we got hit with some extra charges with the schools and everything else. And it blew the plan right out of the water. We were even taking money out of capital funds and reserve funds and everything else, balancing the budget that year.
Well, do you think it's worth it to put a committee together to try to come up with some long-term plan for the next five years and how we're going to deal with this?
I take, I take 60% of what Stephen said and it's true. We, I have a lot of policies out there right now. But I do think it's healthy to keep thinking. And I'm serious. We're never going to affect future boards because they won't, you know, it'd have to be bylaw. You'd have to have it in the charter. It is a policy. As long as it's a policy, it's a warm, fuzzy dog, you know.
We're setting up policies to be, to be ignored, in my opinion, if we did that.
But if we don't have, then if we set up a policy, if we look at a five-year plan on what we're going to do with the tax rate, and at least you have a plan and it's a discussion, and if someone moves from the plan, they realize, okay, you have moved from this plan and you've spent more money in this program or this, the schools are here, but you've now moved away from the plan, which means we're coming that closer to hitting the wall or increasing the tax rate.
If we controlled every aspect of this budget, I would congratulate you 1,000%, but we don't. And there's a large part of this budget we don't control. And that's the difficult thing of managing up here is how do we keep this thing level when we don't control 50, 60, 70, 80% of the budgets, totally out of our control? I mean, the big shark's already gone through. We're just getting the little pieces that fell off.
Yeah, but if we don't. Yeah, but if we don't, if we don't show leadership and direction, then we're just basically saying that the whale is going to run the town.
We are providing leadership. We've got sound policies, Marie, but we can't even hold our policies up because, well, I mean, you're, two years ago, you took money out of one of the policy-driven funds.
Yes, I did.
I mean, it happens.
It happens. And there'll be times that we will go up to the full 2.5%.
And I think, I think Paul Pesterzik needs to come to us with a plan from his background and say, "Here's your prop. Here's what's happening in seven, eight years. Here's what my recommendations are." Start taking it from the financial experts. You've got some people in finance committee that may be pulled in to help on the puzzle. You got a brilliant town manager that can come in. I mean, he's networking across the-
You got someone else in mind?
The globe. Oh, yeah. Well, he left a minute ago. Yeah, we can't stop.
So, you're saying the next step would be to ask for a plan from Paul?
That's part of it.
Okay.
I think Paul, Paul, I think Paul should bring us a plan and say-
I think when there's a plan to be made, he does, I don't, and Marie, I don't intend this to sound disrespectful, but this strikes me as a solution in search of a problem. Because we have-
I think the problem is there.
Right. But policies, we already have sufficient policies to undergird a lot of what we're doing, which is why we have a high bond rating, which is why we have a GFOA finance, you know, Financial Budgeting Best Practices Award. Now, we've got it two years in a row. So, by saying we need more policies-
No, no, I'm saying, is policy a solution to how we could do long-term problems? Now, Richard, we've already gone off that. Richard says to ask for a plan from the CFO.
Right. But I was gonna build off something that Richard said that kind of made the light bulb go off in my head that I do think is getting to what you wanna do without spinning our wheels on policies that we're gonna end up ignoring when things get tight and we're concerned about a town meeting showdown between us and the schools, which is where we all know that that's how this plays out. One of our financial policies can be converted to bylaws. Because Richard's absolutely right. If it's a policy, we can ignore it. If it's a bylaw, we can't. And so, do we need to strengthen our bylaws to make sure that we are prepared for more financial hard times? I mean, I'll be honest with you, and I think we've experienced this. I don't know that the appetite is there for radical change until people realize that they're going to be losing core services like that next year. And that's makes, that's common in most communities in our country. People don't gravitate to the idea of changing or giving something up or not getting the thing they want out of the budget until they realize that there's not gonna be police officers on midnights. We're going back to a volunteer fire department. Class sizes are going from 21 to 30. Until we hit those moments, people really, it's hard to get people to focus on making the self-discipline changes we need to make. Because you're absolutely right. What you wanna do is 100% correct. But the select board doesn't make those final decisions. And why have policies, why have even more policies that have the-
Well, no, I've already rolled off the policies. I like Richard's idea of a CFO coming up and looking at a five-year plan on where we should be going with the tax rate.
But Marie, here's the problem with the plan is that, you know, when I kinda looked ahead at budgeting, I said, "Boy, fiscal 2018 budget is gonna be when, you know, when the rubber really hits the road and we're gonna have to do something drastic." And lo and behold, this is the first year that I can remember the schools came in with a 1 point something percent increase. Why? Because one student in special ed, no, you know, either aged out of the system or is no longer in it, and the out-of-state travel with it, $400,000, boom. You, there is nobody who planned for that that I know of in the system. So, we could've done all the financial planning in the world, and there was, you know-
But it doesn't mean you don't do, it doesn't mean you don't do the plans.
But that one student saved us from all kinds of problems this year, which could've been everything from 2.5 overrides to layoffs to who knows what. Because it was a $400,000 solution that the school committee came back. Because last November, when we sat here, we had this massive, you know, projected shortfall in the budget which literally disappeared overnight. So, you tell me how we're gonna tell Paul Pesterzik, "I want you to be a suitsayer and foresee this kinda stuff two, three, four years in a row in advance." To be able to project this, it's kind of a, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good, and this is the year that we were lucky. And I have to tell you that because, you know, there was nothing going for us this year. We had an increase in pension. We had an increase in medical. We had, you know, every year, it's been one thing or another kinda let us go. We had one year, we had, you know, zero increase in salary.
Well, I think we're talking about apples and oranges here. Because what we're talking about is, if we keep, if we keep going up 2.5% every year, and I know what, the thing that saved us this year, in my opinion, wasn't so much that. It was the increase in the value of the homes.
No, 'cause that's, that gave us, instead of a four-year horizon, a six- or seven-year horizon. Right. But this year, we were fine.
I think we still need to look at some long-term planning for the tax rate. Because what we are doing is we're looking to put in some overrides here. And I don't think we can be going up 2.5% for the next five years at the same time we're doing that.
But as Richard said, you know, whatever the number is, if it's 80% of the, you know, between salaries and schools, you know, there's a lot we can't control. And it's, you know, as opposed to, we go back to our employees and say, "Gee, there's gonna be a six-year period of time where we get no raises for anybody." And that, you say that, and you're not gonna have anybody working here.
You may also get some policy direction coming off that task force you're talking about, the regionalized task force, because I think there's likely gonna be stuff come out of that, too. It's more in line with what you're saying and what Stephen's saying and what Mark is saying. Because they all had the same problems.
Yes.
So, why don't we try to get more brains at the same table and start sharing ideas, you know, what you suggested? And we may get something positive come out of it.
All right. So, I'll stick to this task force until someone else comes up with another idea of how to approach our long-term problem.
But cast the task force with that, too.
Okay. That sounds, so we'll mention that as a big issue. Well, of course, what they'll probably be, the number-one way of bringing down your pension deniability and your OPEB is decrease the number of benefited positions.
That's not necessarily true. I really believe there are alternatives, Marie, because I've lived through some-
No, there's alternatives, but that is the number one way of doing it.
It's the simplest way to do it, but it may not be palatable to your employees or, you know-
Well, because we had a huge savings in, when they ended up looking at the-
Cafeteria?
The cafeteria, yeah.
Right. But I mean, you know, I mean, if Longmeadow had the luxury of being able to unilaterally put together a two-tiered pension plan, so all new employees came in with a different pension system, you know, that was, you know, you don't have to cut down the number of people you hire. What you wanna do is, in fact, come up with a whole bunch of money, get a lot of people to retire early, so you replace them with people who, you know, who come in with a different pension plan, a two-tiered pension plan. I mean, that's what my old employer did at one point, and it worked pretty successfully for, in the private sector, you know?
Well, federal government did the same thing, too.
Okay, so we'll move on. We'll keep the task force going. And Mark and Bill will talk about how to get that up and going. Approval of minutes for April 3rd?
I'm hoping we approve the minutes of the April 3rd, 2017 Select Board Meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the next thing is the Energy Task Force Goals vote. We pushed that out for about a month. But before we begin that, I wanna say, Mark and Dave Miller did a fabulous job. They went to, the Eversource is asking for, gosh, 27% increase in electric rates. It's outrageous. And they had a hearing downtown Springfield. And Mark, myself, and Dave Miller went. Mark spoke about how the last rate increase in 2010, they allowed a change in the depreciation of the lights that increased their costs. Was it 40%? And there was a gasp in the room, and it's blocked our ability to not only buy the lights, but decrease our costs. And Dave Miller, who's on the Energy Task Forces as well as Transitions Longmeadow, spoke about the fact there's no tariff. So, even if we put LED lights up to decrease our energy consumption, we would be paying the same price as the high cost of the other bulb. Because Eversource, even though they have different tariffs for other towns and other states, they will not do it for us. So, there was a very strong argument about not giving them any rate increases, number one. And plus, do not do it as long as they have been not in negotiating with us fairly.
Yeah, I'd like to mention, I reviewed what Mark put together, and he did a nice job. It's a well thought out, well-delivered document, so I appreciate you taking the extra effort, Mark. That was a great job.
You gave a great historical analysis of what had occurred. And you quoted statute and everything. It was very impressive. I think we need to follow up now to get, keep putting pressure on Boston. And anyone who wants to help us and write letters, just let us know. Because it really is an outrageous situation that, I know, Mark, you have been a fighting for since 2008?
It hasn't done a whole lot, but we're still working on it.
Mark, streetlights gold. And the current, we're talking about saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And people who really feel conservation's important, that we would be decreasing our energy use by over 60% on the streetlights. On the streetlights, yeah. And we still have the same streetlights up, but it's over 60%. And Eversource is not cooperating with us in the least.
So, what are the, I'm not familiar with the Energy Task Force Goals.
Oh, we have a whole report that we created about a month ago. And there's a set of goals and recommendations for the schools and goals and recommendations for the town side. And what we are looking for is a vote to adopt the goals. I know Stephen was going to come back to us about what he was going to recommend or any concerns. I know a lot of them, the goals we had, are ones that are already on our plate. Did you wanna give us a report or recommendations on that?
These are the eight goals, right.
The eight goals, yeah.
Do you remember what the date was of that, Marie? What meeting it was?
Yes, I should be able to tell you this. I think it was all the way back in February.
I must've still been on vacation mentally.
Yes, it had to be in February, the end of February sometime, I think.
It wasn't in February.
It was not February?
I'm looking at the, everything was in the packet for February 6th.
Oh, no, it was the end of February, I think. In fact, I think, Richard, you were out of town.
Yeah, for some reason.
Okay, yeah, it was February 21st. That's when we got the recommendations.
Okay.
The ones I have are dated on the blog, December 16th, 2013. I know the Energy Committee's been working on these for a while.
Yeah, it was distributed for the February 21st.
But I'm sure I'll look at the same document.
Yeah, the, and what we did was we took the original Green Communities grant and the goals there, and those are listed in the top. But what we tried to do, and it's actually 16 items, which is on the bottom of page six. And which starts with, include energy conservation as a metric in prioritizing capital projects.
Yeah, so, goal summary, goal one, buildings to target. Building one, center elementary school, I think it's windows, new windows. And then review HVC operating, I mean, that's something I agree with. It's just, it's millions of dollars for the windows.
No, I'm talking about, go to page, go to line six.
What?
Page six. There's 16 items. The others, just, those are the, we just repeated the goals that were on the-
Right. I don't think I have that in here.
Green Communities grant. It was in the packet. Page six.
Page 16?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I'm confused. Page six. Okay, so, energy conservation as a metric in prioritizing capital projects. We don't currently do that, but we can. Implement policy to procure investment energy-efficient equipment adds costs. Accepting the added costs, I think that's a case-by-case thing. But I mean, I think we do share that goal of being able to, because if you were able to spend a little extra money and gets it and knocks down your operating costs in the meanwhile, that's something we always conceptually wanna do. We are looking at, you know, with all the boilers we're looking at now, we are looking at phasing out oil and dual fuel. Hybrid electric fleet. We've looked at that. We haven't found a great deployment option for that.
Well, I think one of the things we were looking at is when you look at a car, like you were buying the engineer's car or things like that, that you consider the hybrid.
Yeah. And I think we do, but there are times where the cost difference isn't justified. And the other thing is a lot of cars we buy, we have that fuel, Green Communities fuel or vehicle policy. And we've been following that and getting a lot better gas mileage on some of the vehicles we buy. But a lot of the vehicles we buy don't, would be exempt from that. But we do, we do look at the, we do look at that with each purchase. GPS, we've put in, we've deployed in the DPW vehicles already. We do collect data on fuel used by vehicles, but as you guys know, our Gas Boy system is antiquated. A new DPW facility will have upgraded fuel dispensing and data collection capacities. We'll be able to much better use the data to greater effect if we have the new equipment. We're using the energy, we're using the grant right now for the energy efficiency of the DPW.
No, 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 no. We're talking about the $1,000 we got last year. We have $1,000 left in the budget. And that was, so, to use it on improving the police department building. So, that's where we are recommending the money go.
You know, I remember when I read through these, and I'm looking at them again now. You know, in general, there, it's a great list. I think it's a very long list, potentially all encompassing. The one thing on that list which bothers me, and I think I said something at the time about it, is the, you know, buy into whoever the gas company is and get rid of our dual-fuel capabilities. To me, there's a, you know, I understand there's a potential benefit. I mean, the gas company pays you to make sure you can never use oil again. But it seems to me that that flexibility is almost like an insurance policy. I mean, you know, yes, gas is cheaper today, but it's not that much cheaper. It's not like it was four years ago where, you know, every house in town was switching, pulling out their oil tanks when, you know, when oil was, you know, $125 a barrel or something like that. Now, oil's at $50 a barrel. And I'm just wondering if that's really the right thing for the town to do to keep ourselves flexible. And again, I get that there's an entity out there, the gas company wants to pay us to pull out that capability. But it's kinda like, you really listen to the salesman on this side of you when you might not want to.
That's right. Is there any other item?
Other than those, I think it's a great list.
But I think, Marie, when you say, "Let's adopt the goals," does that mean if we don't have a zero net energy adult building, senior, new adult seniors and zero net energy, we can't build it?
No, no, these are goals. These aren't things that you, these, of course, you're not gonna get into a hybrid electric fleet. It just means you're adopting the goal to try to get to that. And then, of course, the financial, what requirements and what efficiencies can be put into the system. Is there another item someone wants removed?
Well, what's this, number 10, decrease the use of nightlights? I'm not so sure with that.
Oh, this is something that Energy Task Force has been struggling with for years. The, there's a whole bunch of lights on at the high school. There's a bunch of lights that are just left on all the time. Now, we're not saying, "Turn off these lights," because that's a discussion that has to be made between the systems manager and the police force. But we're saying, "Can we decrease some of the lights in front of some of our public buildings that are blaring all night long?" But we're not saying, "Get rid of them." It's just, there's gotta be a way of increasing the efficiency as, same time as conserving.
At some point, the oldies are so efficient.
The other one about the electric cars, I mean, you know, they have these electric cars now. You know, they only go about, I don't know, 90 miles radius. But imagine no gasoline. I mean, you know, it really is, I mean, it's something we should get on board. I mean, we should have at least one or two in the fleet. I mean, there's no way that we shouldn't, because, because most of the driving, the town, you know, town cars are really right in this area. You know, we don't have to take them all to Boston. And so, it would really make sense for us to do that.
Eventually, that's going to change. There's a new battery that's just invented. It's not to market yet, I don't think, but it's gonna double the life of those batteries. So, a car that goes 200 miles is gonna go 400 or 500 miles.
They also have six- They also have six thousand dollar grants if you put a charging system in your town. But I think you have to have a commitment to have one or two electric vehicles. And then you get the practically free charging system put in. But it's something that we should just start looking at in the process of, that's why we're not saying change to hybrid electric, but just, these are things that we're moving towards and considering more.
Toyota just developed, just came out with a police pursuit Prius. I don't know if it works, but they
They have Prius, I think, in Manhattan. They're running around with the
But they're not doing high-speed pursuits in Manhattan.
No, that's
Parking enforcement or something like that.
Yeah, no, they're active police that are doing on the hybrids.
Do you ask any of the cops how they feel about it? Trying to jump out of a Prius when it turned to trucks?
Well, what is that, the commercial with the Prius? They couldn't catch, the little red Prius? Yeah, you'd see me go.
Tesla does zero to sixty in about three seconds.
Yeah, but it's also sixty five.
Tesla's coming out with a semi tractor trailer.
There you go. But I heard their charging system is different from everyone else's. They have a dedicated Tesla.
Then we could buy four trucks for the price of that one Tesla. The one thing I was, let me say this, there isn't a goal in here that we don't think about. And so adopting the goals, I think, is fine. But I just, sometimes what I've found is that when I communicate the practical realities of doing some of these things, it's just not absorbed by people who really want to see things happen. And I just, you know, there's an analysis you have to go through, including payback. What's the payback on a hybrid electric vehicle versus another vehicle? Like, the classic example is the engineering department car that I co-opted for the town manager's vehicle.
I didn't hear that.
You know, at some point in time, someone down there is going to need another vehicle. And I will, at that point, turn it over to them because the most natural use of an electric vehicle will be mine. I don't put very many miles on it. But it doesn't, it wouldn't pay back, it doesn't justify me going out and getting an electric vehicle for the town vehicle, you know, with the amount of miles I put on it. It's only when that needs to be, replacement needs to be made, does that make sense. So that's the type of thing where, of course, when it comes time to do it, of course, we'll do that. It makes complete sense, but to go out and do it now out of sequence or, you know, if there's not reliable options for all-wheel drive for all-electric vehicles, which I'm not aware that they really are at a cost point that we can afford, then the ones that we give to, like, even DPW administrative staff need to have all-wheel drive because they go out in the winter time on call. So there's, there's a small number of vehicles in our fleet that this could really be useful for. And I just want to manage expectations on that regard.
Well, I think just every year, every year, we look at the fleet, we analyze it. And as you said, you'll do that analysis. And then we'll come the day that you'll go, oh, my gosh, it is affordable. It is all-wheel drive. They've finally done it. Because I think we're going to be seeing a lot of changes in cars in the next few years.
Have we, have you talked on the Energy Committee about promoting solar applications within the community?
In fact, there was a program at a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for, there was a pilot program and they were asking us if we wanted to become part of that. We just weren't up and running quickly enough to get on that program, but we are considering it.
All of these goals seem to be internal, they're not external to the community.
Yeah, yeah, well, we have a program, we're, we're looking at external for energy conservation. But we really have to be careful on what resources and that we're able to do. But we, part of our mission is for residents and businesses in the town to see what we can do to
Well, it would always be nice if there was a clearinghouse, if a resident had a question, a third-party question, they could come to somebody in the town and ask them a question about, say, furnaces that they're having, salesmen trying to sell them this, that, and the other. I mean, there's decisions being made every day.
There is, at the state level.
Yeah.
Mass energy, mass saves.
Yeah, you're right, at the state level.
We couldn't staff that. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the ability to staff that with the level of knowledge that would be of benefit to somebody. I would say we're, the town's ahead of the game once, ahead of the game. We're advanced on solar because someone can go ahead and get one of these gazillion companies that are selling solar panels for your house and just come and get a building department from the building department and have at it. In terms of the development of solar, that's something that we're working on right now. People are calling us fairly regularly about using roofs of municipal buildings and things like that.
I guess I was talking kind of a clearinghouse for real accurate information instead of biased sales information, Stephen, that somebody's collecting all this and saying, okay, here's the angle you should be going. There's a lot of questions to ask. It's a brand-new field and homeowners, there's a lot of questions.
Mass saves is good like that.
You're right, mass save is good.
And we've been promoting mass saves and trying to encourage people to do that. But that is part of what the Energy Task Force is hoping to do, but this is our first attempt at a first report.
Well, you know, I wonder how many people in town are even aware that you can put a Wi-Fi thermostat on your furnace now and get a hundred dollar rebate from mass save.
Oh, see, I didn't even know that.
But very few people do know it. They'll give you a hundred bucks and you can get one for about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So you've got the latest state-of-the-art thermostat on your home for twenty-nine dollars.
Oh, see, and that's, we have the website, we're trying to develop and use more. We did put some stuff on mass saves, but we'll look that up and add that to it.
Because that field is evolving so fast right now. And you've got a lot of things, a lot of retrofits are taking place up here. It's not like in a southern place where everything's brand-new. Up here, there's retrofits taking place. Every single day, there's somebody putting a new furnace in.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you're right. It does feel like we're putting them in every day.
Yeah.
Actually, we will, putting in furnaces every day.
Yeah, well, I meant the community.
So is there a motion to accept the goals other than goal three?
Will it make you happy?
Yeah, it will.
Okay, so moved.
My warm puppy.
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Oh, there's a warm puppy.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you. So that would be goals one through sixteen, except for goal three. All right, and I'll keep you informed on how things are going with the streetlight advocacy too. Stephen, town manager report.
So you have my report, just a few brief things. I did include a plan from the Colvest Group for some modifications they want to make to the tree belt in front of what the former Hampshire Bank or Hampden Bank. They are going to be going to the planning board in the very near future. They do have a lease signed with Alex Bagel Shop from the Big Y. So there's some unbeknownst to me time sensitivity to this. You know, it's a fairly, it's a fairly significant change in that configuration of the tree belt. And so that would fall, to me, under our objects in the tree belt policy. But in a more detailed way that I would say would probably justify a license agreement for this project like we did with Bay Path. And I've sent them, I sent them the license agreement, have the Bay Path signage. I think it just would need some modification to fit the situation. I think my view, and we reviewed at the traffic committee level, and, you know, the, if you can see the plan, one of the benefits of it is we'll improve the builder, the developer, the property owner, I guess I should say, will improve the sidewalks all around there. And in the construction, neck down, that area on the south end where traffic comes out into Bliss Road, as Mark pointed, it's really wide now and people can kind of drift in and out of there. And it's kind of like a five-way intersection. We know that. We looked at blocking it off, we looked at changing directions and just the best, the best option. Closing it off would be a problem for fire department access. And so this was the best option, is to kind of close it down, make it so traffic is being much more directed closer to the intersection than drifting out, because the stop bar is way back. And kind of moving the stop bar down to a more intuitive spot in the intersection. So those are the kind of changes that we're recommending. You know, I guess my recommendation would be to, you know, authorize the negotiation of a license agreement to do this in support of making that strip center viable and, you know, supporting local businesses. I think if they're more successful and generate more revenue, it makes the property more valuable, which ultimately is helpful to all of us. Now, sorry, now, if that's, I mean, so, but the vote I'm asking for is not to approve the plan. It's, the plan we're just to look at as well. But it's to basically go to the next step and develop a license agreement that I can bring back to the board for a future vote.
Do you want to talk about this now or you want to finish Stephen's?
I'd say talk about this now, yeah.
Can I make some comments? Stephen, I, I looked at this plan and it is so worked up.
Yeah.
It makes it tough. I actually went and took pictures and I'd be glad to share pictures and videos of that area. Then compared what was there on the ground with what is in this picture. And I'll just stay, come right out and say, I oppose this plan. I oppose the imposition on the town tree belt. I don't think the benefit to the town is worth this license. And I differentiate it from what Bay Path was doing because it's not parking, it's not cars. I, as I noted in a note to you, and I think I copied everybody in, you know, that right now, the number of cars that come through there and come out at the intersection of Bliss and Long Meadow Street and that fifth is pretty small, but it's likely to be substantially higher. And I think that that's a, you know, I understand that the safety committee or traffic committee looked at it. But to me, it's, it can't make it safer, that's for certain. It can only make it more, more complex. The number of parking spaces that are added to it are a lot. We're going to be taking down a tree that's just off of the, I think it's on the tree belt, the tree that's coming down. We're literally paving over the tree belt. To do that, the wall's got to come up because it's so sloped. So the wall that is now there that I'm going to estimate is maybe thirty inches tall's got to increase substantially. I just think, as much as I'd like to accommodate this owner of this building to do it, it's just not appropriate for putting, you know, what I'll call diagonal parking in that, in that spot. I think it's a, just a difficult thing to do and it makes a substantial impact not only on the tree belt, cutting down the trees, building up the wall, changing that around, but also with the traffic that's going into the, into the intersection. It's going to take an awful lot to convince me otherwise. So you can count me as a vote against this from now until something very different comes along to show me that what I've seen, what I've looked at, what I took pictures of the other day, isn't what's really going to happen.
And so the, this was done by a traffic planner, because did they look at reversing the flow of this and all? And that didn't seem to work out any better because then people get stuck in bell clares, that was.
But at least coming out of bell clear, you can turn left or you can turn right.
Yeah.
You know, whereas coming out the way you're coming out, you know, you come right out to that, to the light. And if there's somebody coming down Bliss Road, somebody coming out to their right there, you're literally merging cars in the intersection, you know, it's all the above. I mean, and the other thing is that, if you recall, there is a, currently a curb cut and it shows that it would, I guess, remain. That is to the north of where the parking is. So if you come off of, if you will, bell clear, you can actually turn down onto Long Meadow Street before you go to those diagonal parking spaces. And that's, beats me why you do that, other than it was actually a secondary exit for the, for the gas station. I mean, you know, if you're there to go parking, otherwise you're going to find people pulling out those diagonals, trying to back up to go down that, that little curb cut into Long Meadow Street. I mean, I said, I'll be, you know, I wish we could project up some of the actual photographs because the photographs are better at showing this than this diagram. I'd be glad to share them, because I put them on my computer.
That, I mean, the goal when we started looking at it was to eliminate the traffic that comes out of Bliss Road. That's by far the biggest problem with it today. In terms of the encroachment on the tree belt, it is a big change. But when you drive by now, you look up, there's cars. You don't really see this vast expanse of grass unless you're up at that level.
I disagree. I took pictures of it. Because it's sloped, you actually see the grass going up to the drive-by where Hampden Bank was. And you lose that because you're going to raise the
Right, but it looks
Raise the wall.
In the field, I don't know that, because I think it goes from thirty to thirty-six. But there's cars parked there today. So it is a parking area today. And I agree with you, Mark, I mean, it's, you know, the big issue was the traffic going down into Bliss Road. We wanted to eliminate that, but we determined that we couldn't. We can have the developer come and talk about the plans for it and why the spaces are needed and all that other stuff. I can have the traffic sergeant come here and, you know, town engineer. We can go through our comments and, you know, I'm happy to do all of that.
Does the planning board get involved with this?
They're going to do site plan review and that's coming up in May.
I'd be interested to hear what they have to say.
I would say that I'm for doing something here, improving this. My only comment is because it's such a change and you have a big wall there, I just like to see something if different, if possible, because I just don't think people will like it. You know how people are about change like this.
Yeah, I know. I put this on there as an FYI. I'm not asking for a vote tonight.
But I am for improve, for doing something.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, this is just an informational item, Mark. I'm not asking for approval tonight. I know there's a lot more detail you guys are going to want to see, and elevations and the guard rail that they want, all that stuff. But I thought this was a longer timeline based on the, I'd read the newspaper and said Alex's was going to be there for a year. Come to find out, that's not the case and they've signed a lease and now they're on, they're on fire to get this done.
My goodness.
So I didn't know that. So now I'm trying to be responsive to the developer and the business owner by bringing it forward as quickly as we can. But you're right, we want to make sure it's done, we want to make sure it's done correctly.
Yeah, I'd be very interested to hear what planning and what they work in. There might be some changes coming out of planning too.
It seems like they might have been doing some more of that in advance of
Yeah.
They came to me with it a while ago and we looked at it. But again, it was not clear to me that this was a, an abbreviated timeline until last week.
It seemed odd to sign a lease and not have this taken care of.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'd given it positive feedback, like, yeah, this is something we look at. We're happy to bring it forward. I think it's, it's not, when we were talking about it conceptually, it wasn't as dramatic a change. And the other thing is I think it gives us the opportunity to improve that Bliss Road connection with the parking here now. Because like I said, I don't want to lose sight of the fact, it's bad now. And can, even though there'll be more cars, will they be better controlled by the changes that we make? It was our view that they would. But again, there's a lot more information that we can, we can discuss. I just want to get on your radar screens.
Sounds good.
So Stephen, but to put this on our radar, I mean, is somebody going down the path that says, well, it's too late now. I mean, these people signed the lease and that, we don't really have a choice. I mean, you know, if there's no, and I'm just speaking for myself, but if the select board has no great desire to see it this way, shouldn't we tell them right now? Don't, don't go way down this path without changing it.
I, yeah.
I mean
That's why we're discussing it.
Right, I think they need to get a sense of, and I'm only one vote here, but they need to get a sense from people that, that don't spend a lot of money, don't spend a lot of effort until you come up with something better. Or maybe it is that, yeah, don't worry, this is going to get approved. Because somebody's spending a lot of effort on this and a lot of time and money. And I hate to see them get down the road and then we look like the bad guys that say, well, we were led to believe it's fine and we've done all this work and now you're telling me no. I'd rather tell them no now.
I see this as needing some improvement, I mean, that intersection. And the parking there for retailers is not that great, you know? So I'm all for making some improvement there. Just like to see, you know, like to see what planning has to say, but I'm all for doing something.
Yeah, I'm for doing something concerned about the number of parking spaces they're trying to push on there.
Yeah, I think they're looking at parking spaces on both sides of that, like, that's, I mean, you know, I go to the bagel shop and usually there's not a long line. There's, you know, like, cars come in, they get their bagels, they leave you. You have four spots. I mean, they've been dealing with a pretty small parking area for a long time. And I, so, I mean, if you had half of this amount of parking, I would think that that would really meet their needs.
But some of that is driven by our bylaws. Like the number of spaces you need, there's requirements that you have to have. And that's the thing, you know, make it quote better. There's certain ways, you know, you have to have a drive lane of a certain width. You have to have a parking space of a certain width. There's a finite, the only thing that's fixed is the amount of land that's there available for repurpose. So I think they've tried to make the best they can out of the space we have. And so I've tried to be flexible with them and I actually thought we'd have, like I said, I apologize, I thought we'd have longer to work on it. You know, I've made no promises or no commitments. I don't really have that authority to do that. But But, you know, like I said, this is just informational for now.
Should we have it on the next agenda, then?
Probably have to have it on the next agenda, sure.
Any other questions?
Does the planning commission have the authority to give them a waiver from the X parking spots per square foot of retail space?
I think they do. I mean, they're going in for an informal presentation on the third, on May 3rd.
And I, because that speaks to Tom's question of, you know, is, is the bagel shop the, the same amount of foot traffic as a CBS or something like that, where we were pretty insistent on having it-
Yeah, there's also the Fred Astaire Dance Studio as well, I mean, the building is largely vacant. And so between the bagel shop and the expansion of the Fred Astaire space, they may get to full occupancy and all that's going to drive increased parking demand.
So there's a bank, there was visions of Long Meadow, I don't think that's-
It's gone.
That's gone, right.
It's all gone.
And then around the corner on Bliss Road, there's-
The Fred Astaire. So at the end of this, there'll be Fred Astaire and the bagel shop.
Yeah, and Fred Astaire doesn't have a lot of traffic.
There's, there's got to be others.
I mean, I'm not-
It's just too big a building just for bagels and Fred Astaire.
I'm not a partner in the property and neither is anybody else here, so that's why I want to wait and hear from, this is what they propose, so this is what their ideas of what they need.
Okay.
So-
The next thing on your town manager's report?
Yeah, regional dispatch, just, we, we continue to have discussions with Chickapi. It looks like they may be looking to join our, even our district's shrunk, they're looking to be a part of it, and we may be proceeding with a grant application that would include Chickapi, which would actually be, even though it seems a little different. The state has made some, I'll say commitments to Chickapi, but the state is working closely with the city on improving their dispatch operations. They're in the process of renovating a space into a dispatch center that this regional dispatch could likely fit into, was, you know, one of, one of the reasons why we kind of fell apart was we didn't have a site. And so this kind of, this would help with the site question, and we feel like we'd maybe get a more favorable reimbursement rate from the state by being partners with Chickapi, so we're just trying to figure out what questions we need to ask to sort all that out. In fact, we met this afternoon to talk about that a little further, so that, that'll be, I think we're, we're shifting gears and going and looking at partnering with Chickapi. I think it could, I think it could be a win-win, to be honest with you.
Stephen, I just, because I think that, you know, I've mentioned this to you before, that, you know, in the, in the eighties, you know, they always would say, the last place you want to be if there's a problem is the Air Force Base of Chickapi. That's ground zero, that's where they would drop their bombs.
That's all this is talking, that's not, it's in the Chickapi Police Department.
This would be Chickapi Police Department.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We talked about a little bit, the future is maybe west over Air Force Base, a regional, a regional center around there someplace, like a, a larger, like real regional center. This is within the Chickapi Police Department.
All right, yeah, because I mean, I just, you know, if, if they're going to bomb any place, that's where they're going to bomb.
No, so, anyway. So then, on another planning, on the other planning front, the Pride Station, we're having a difficult time working with the developer. I don't know that there's going to be legal action that would result from that, but we're having a difficult, the planning, both myself and the planning board is having a difficult time with the owner and, you know, slash developer on just agreeing to do what they said they were going to do. So that's, we're kind of stuck on that one. And then, I did send you guys an email today, this af, this morning, I had a meeting with the police chief and Jeff McAlman from the DPW with representatives from Mass DOT and the Federal Railroad Administration, and to talk about the, they call it Bernie Road Crossing, it's Tina Lane officially, but they, in all of their paperwork, it says Bernie Road. But to talk about the crossing and next steps, and I think for the first time, really since the day of the accident, when we started thinking about this, I, it's clearer to me, you know, what steps we could take to have this addressed or One Avenue. And I'm going to speak somewhat conditionally, because I think there are a few variables that we need to nail down before we can say we are 100%, this is 100% the path we need to go. But it is looking like this could be a, what they call Section 130 crossing. And if that's the case, it would be something that the state would pursue using federal dollars and some contribution from the railroad. And that there's a, there's a diagnostic review of the crossing, and in this case, they would do it as a corridor, so they would look at that stretch from Bar Call up through Emerson and do a diagnostic review. And then they would prepare a report based on the data collection and then prepare a ranking or a prioritization that they would submit to the Federal Highway Administration. And then that would get evaluated for funding, you know, in the next round of, of projects that get done.
And when's the next round?
Well, I think it would be this fall, we would know, it would be submitted and we'd maybe know something this fall.
Okay, so all this can be done by the fall? That's what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm saying the report can be done by the fall.
This, no, the diagnos, right, I was about to follow up by saying, diagnostic review will take place in early May, I think before town meeting. I did press them to get that done as soon as possible, to at least initiate that part of the process. They, the one thing I'll credit the, the folks in the room today was that they understood that this was a big deal. We didn't spend a lot of time dwelling on the 30-plus year history of the crossing and why it hadn't happened, because no one in the room was around when they, when the decisions were made or not made. But I think it was, I think it's, quite frankly, the reporting from the Republican is outlined, it was really, I think, some, some level of, I'd say bureaucracy in a pejorative sense, but there's a lot of large organizations that are a party to these types of decisions, and it must have gotten lost in the shuffle somewhere along the way eons ago. You know, I think we've noticed that, you know, even how Amtrak used the crossing changed, they, as the reporting said, they changed it right after the accident. So it's now on everybody's, you know, radar screen, front and center, and I think everyone's committed to addressing this as quickly as possible, with the understanding, though, that it's still a lengthy process to get, you know, up the, you know, up the prioritization list of the Federal Highway Administration, for them to get, to make the funding decision, and then for those funds to get released for the design and the construction. So I don't want to make it seem like by this fall, we're going to have a plan in place for crossing, but if the diagnostic report shows that it needs to be elevated as a higher priority, it will move as quickly as one of these things can possibly move.
Okay. And you'll let us know when the diagnostic review report is done?
And if it, and if it does meet the criteria for that Section 130 program.
And I guess, before I hand it to everyone else, the other question I had was, and the police closure will stay until we have that report on what's happening? And the neighbor said they were talking about closing the other Emerson. Have you any information?
That's new to me.
You've never heard anything like that?
I, I saw that someplace, I can't remember where.
Maybe they've heard of it. I know they're making some repairs, or some, you know, maybe some, you know, upgrades or something like that, but I, I hadn't heard that they were going to close it.
Yeah, because they can't close both, yeah.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I mean, you know, I understand the people on, in that neighborhood, I understand their concerns. But the only true way to guarantee the safety of that crossing is to permanently close it. And, but, when we talked about that today, it's kind of, is that an option on the table? There are reasons beside, I mean, I don't have a second means of egress out of my street either. But are there, are there public, public policy reasons in addition to their concerns that make it so it should remain open and controlled by sig, by signals? And we kicked it around for a little bit, you know, we do have the leaf disposal site, people do use it. Quite frankly, to gain access to the conservation land, which is used heavily by people, there are, are already issues with people crossing the tracks in places they shouldn't illegally, quite honestly. And that's always going to be a risk, and so to block off one area so there's nothing south of Emerson Road to cross is going to basically put people in a situation where they're going to be doing it, they're going to be jaywalking, if you, if you, you know, for lack of a better term. And so creating a more pedestrian and vehicle friendly crossing at Tina Lane can maybe be a safety enhancement for that entire run of track. So that was the conversation we had today of, you know, there are valid reasons to keep it open and, and enhance the, you know, add signalization and enhance the safety and security for exit vehicles and pedestrians.
Any other questions?
Yeah, now, who's going to, who's going to communicate back to the concerned citizens? Is that going to be you, Stephen?
Uh, yes, I, I did, I asked, Chief Dearborn was not present at the meeting, but I will brief him. Chief Stankiewicz has an event that night of May 1st that's been long scheduled, and I'll be here with you guys. And so I've asked Chief Dearborn to go to that neighborhood meeting that Senator Lesser and Representative Asher have brought together and provide that briefing. I've certainly, I've talked to Senator Lesser's office, I, I am still working with them to schedule a secretariat level meeting. Now that we've got the kind of ground level people starting to, you know, move forward on this, I want to make sure that the secretariat level, especially at FHWA and DOT, Mass DOT, understand this is in process so they can be looking for it, because that's one thing we can do to try and make this go along as quickly as possible. But the, the level of commitment at the local level, at the, at the base level was very strong.
So you will assure us, though, that there will be communication back down to the members that keep coming in and keeping in a pocket, okay? It's going to be very important.
Anyone else for Stephen? Mark?
Yeah, I just want to go back a second, Stephen, to your comment on the regional We've put a lot of effort into this, you've put a lot of effort into this specifically, towns put a lot of effort into it. At some point, do we fold our tent? And I, I don't say that, you know, to say, I'm, I'm ready to do that yet, but, you know, at some point, we've got to understand, we're, we're, we're rolling this big ball uphill by ourselves and nobody else seems to want to be on it, and this team is, is more and more times, you know, towns drop out. You know, clearly Chickapi and Long Meadow are pretty divergent, you know, municipalities. The city of Chickapi has different demands and you say, well, dispatch is dispatch, but one of the things that we liked originally was the rural towns of Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Hampton, Wilberham, that kind of stuff, and as they drop out, at what point do you make the decision? Do we make the decision? And I hate to see it happen, because I think there are all kinds of benefits to us, but you're pushing this ball uphill by yourself at this point.
Well, I would say pushing it by myself. I am really supported by Chief Dearborn, Chief Stankiewicz, because they still firmly believe in this. I mean, to be honest with you, Mark, if I felt like it was not going to be a good deal for the town, or there wasn't going to be, you know, you look at OPEB, town, if we do this as a district, the town's OPEB number goes down, now the district's OPEB number gets creative, and maybe they can come up with a different set of benefits or different retirement package, kind of washes that out. I didn't bring this up in that conversation, but the change in law that allows district agreements and intermunicipal agreements to be done by select board votes, that town meeting vote, is a backdoor pathway to doing some of this, because then you can identify localized services that you can do regionally by virtue of a district or IME. That's a sideline. So I'd be the first person to say, this doesn't work, we should be out of it, I should stop spending so much time on it. But the concept works. I think when I reported about the district falling apart, 3.5 we all spend collectively, together we'd spend 2.4. You get higher level service, be ready for next gen, I mean, the policy justifications for doing it are still there, which is why we're still doing it. We just haven't had the right pieces together to snap in place, to get to that next level. After my discussion today, I actually feel like we're closer now and that the pieces that we have on the table now work together better than the ones we had as a six-town rec, believe it or not. And a lot of this, you have to remember, was got started not empirically, but relationship-based. Chiefs getting together and talking about it, and each town got out of it for empirical reasons, but they got into it because they had all been talking at, you know, chiefs' events and things like that. The concept is still sound, I still think it's the right thing for the community. I know Chief Stankiewicz believes the same thing, and he oversees the dispatch department. And so as long as we still believe that this is the right thing for the community, that we can provide a higher level of service for same or less money, we're going to keep pushing that rock. And I do think that, it's kind of tough, because the next grant's due May 15th, we have a lot of things to sort out in terms of adding Chickapi to the mix. But I think it's, I think it's still very much doable, and like I said, I think if we can get through this transition that we've been in, the towns that stay in, stay in this effort are going to come out much better off.
I actually heard today that in California, you can use your iPhone, videotape something and send it to dispatch.
Because they, they have five dispatch centers.
Five dispatch centers for the state of California.
Oh, that, that's a big state. That's five centers.
And we have like 200 here in Massachusetts, this tiny little state. So, somebody's doing it right, somebody's doing it wrong, you can figure out which, which one I believe is, is which. But in terms of the dispatch quality law, I do want to address that point that you raised. The, the first thing I said to the city of Chickapi was, we don't want to be dispatched by a city. And what they said back to me was, right, we want to dispatch like a small community. They want that community policing type of dispatch as well, and truthfully, it's going to be the district director that we hire that's going to be in charge of making sure that dispatchers, that dispatchers handle calls the way all of the towns like them handled. And so I do think that that element of it is there, it's not going to be one of these, you know, call back if you're, you know, call back unless you're bleeding or something like that. Chickapi shares that same goal we have, and so that was one of the kind of unifying building blocks that are kind of getting us going forward.
Any other questions on the rest of the town manager's report that's in there? Okay, great. All right. The only other thing I wanted to add under subcommittee reports is we are advertising for all the committees, but I realized we're not advertising for the charter committee. And I talked to Debbie about it, and she said, we have never made-
The job description.
-a decision on what the composition of that committee was going to be, so I dropped the ball on that. I know we voted that in, I think, all the way in December, so I'm going to put it on next agenda, and I just want everyone to look at different models out there and decide what they feel the right composition should be, so that we can get that charter committee up and moving. Okay?
Just remind it to them that I'm going to be on the road for a couple of Thursday and Friday.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into an executive session? And the purpose of the executive session, what would we say?
So it's the reputational one.
Reputational one? Okay.
There's one about talking about something to harm somebody's reputation, to the citizens of the year committee.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'll, for reputational reasons. Is there a second?
Yep.
I can look it up if you want, but it's still one of the talks.
Debbie, do you want to give us a roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.